Thank you. Okay. Yeah, I'm ready.
All right, I'd like to reconvene to those council made calls. Regular meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, next up on the agenda for unfinished business, discussion and consideration of ordinance that number OR-2020-05-04 amending the village charter to change the former government from mayor council to council manager. And we're gonna leave it at that.
Yep.
And discuss these on two separate issues. So Christina, you had, I know you wrote some things up and what that is and what that change looks like. I see, I have an ordinance here which will have to change this, correct?
Correct.
If we approve this?
Yes.
Okay.
If y'all want to proceed with the discussion on the change of government just by itself, then I can, Chaplin and I can prompt you how to revise that ordinance.
Okay.
If that goes through, if cancel.
Do you have to, have anything that you need to tell us about that?
I do not, no.
Other than what we've read and what's changing? Okay. Jamie, Bob, does anyone have a comment about what this portion of the change of government involves?
Uh, no, not at all. Uh, yeah, our meeting, you know, just a comment, at our meeting with municipal league of governments, I guess, I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember the exact termination, uh, terminology. Um, you see, the municipality thing.
Yes.
Uh, basically, we would top up different forms of government that there are, and that this is a very common form of government that we're looking at. Um, with the charter.
You have some church bells in the background then, Bob?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it you?
We're getting some church bells from your voice. Okay, anything else, any other comments?
Jamie?
No, I just, I think that when we start to look at the form and the change itself is that currently as it sits, that the mayor, the mayor basically has, manages the staff. And changing that to, you know...
Actually, the whole council does.
Yeah.
It's not just the mayor, because I can't do anything as an individual.
Right, but the staff is basically at the mercy of council. And there's a reason we, there's an administrator there to handle the staff and to work with the staff and be responsible for the staff. So I view the change that, and view it as where staff should not be, you know, nervous about any change or any new election coming up where someone comes in and says, okay, you're gone.
Yep.
And that's just completely and totally unfair to staff because their position is truly hinged upon an election, every election.
Every two years.
Every two years. And I just think that's unfair to the staff itself. That's the reason there's administrator that is responsible for the staff and takes the role, it actually reduces the role, because I don't know, maybe he's gonna say, the mayor wants more power. This actually reduces the amount of power that the mayor or the councilman has to staff. I think it's respectful of the staff that this change come about. And so that's my take on it, but also my take as to why this was brought up.
Yeah, and I mean, I agree with everything that you just said, Jamie. I also think that it will give the administrator, which would then be the town manager, a lot more managerial supervision over staff and a lot more authority over staff and it's, you know, instead of coming from us to them, to then to staff. So I think, I think it's gonna flow better and be better and will protect staff, and that's, that's important.
I will share with you, seven years ago when I was elected, in 2013, the first order of business I had, given the form of government we had, was I had to approve bonuses. And who got bonuses? I had two councilmen with their ear, that have each ear. One said, give him this, the other one was the exact opposite. I had no experience with any of staff, I knew none of them, the timing was bad, everything was bad. And I don't work with them on a regular basis. This, this, this does a lot of things. I think it puts the ability for the administrator to decide, and it's not political. Anyone that's hired, whether it's a planner, a finance person, there's no, there's no political bias in it or any with the, I guess, council of the day or of the moment. And it was, I think, a little bit unnerving. My wife is a, you know, has the background of, what is your...
Human rights.
I'm losing my mind here today.
She's gonna be real upset about that.
She's gonna be real upset. And that's her big thing, it is a huge thing, and to have job security is everything, and to hold and base it on a whim of an election and the wrong people get in here and all of a sudden people are gone, that's not a way to live your life. And I will tell you that also, I know and I've witnessed over the seven years, council members coming in and using our staff as secretaries to print things, do things, that sort of stuff, and also take up their time, where they start for five minutes and all of a sudden they'd be there for an hour or two talking to staff. So I think you can control the appointments that need to be made. If a council member wants to come in, it's not something that you should be just drop everything and come talk to the town. I think we need to make appointments and respect your time as well as staff. And I think all of these changes are gonna be a good move for our government going forward and allowing you to have more control on how things and finding the right people and, you know, and that goes with the role, and I, you know, I think you've done a great job. You've proven yourself over the last, was it six years now? So, and that's why I think it's important, and this part of it is actually relinquishing power to your point. Good on that, so. Any other comments, questions?
Nope.
Bob?
I do not.
All right, so we'll need a motion under this ordinance if we actually wanna move forward?
So how do you, so how do you wanna do it to break it out?
You wanna go ahead and read it? I'm good. So the ordinance was presented in front of you, what we would do, end the title, strike out, well, I'll just go ahead and read it. The ordinance should then read, "An ordinance amending the charter of the village of Marvin to change form of government to cancel manager." Strike the "and" to allow the mayor to vote on all matters.
Some moves.
Just begin.
First paragraph, where general statute requires the village to operate as mayor council or council manager form of government, strike what remains.
Okay.
Next paragraph, where as council unanimously approved, resolution of intent to change the form of government from mayor council to council manager, strike the remaining of that paragraph, okay? Except the word "and" at the very end.
And the subsection "I." The little "I."
Okay, and the subsection "I."
So you're deleting that.
Because there's no subsection needed.
Just delete the subsection.
Next paragraph remains, next couple of them remain, you would strike the entirety of section three.
Oh, here it is.
Wait, what? Sorry. Strike the mayor.
Strike the section three in its entirety.
Okay.
And then in section four, it should read pursuant to general statute, village clerk shall cause a notice duly published in the inquiry journal stating the ordinance amended.
To just strike the last part.
The last, and it says, "And allowing the mayor to vote on all matters."
But leave has been adopted.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
"And allowing the mayor to vote," just strike that.
Okay.
On all matters.
And that'll be section three now.
Okay. That would be amended for section three, yes, all right.
And since it's been read into the record, you could say as modified.
As modified.
If you were gonna make a motion to...
I'm just kidding.
Approve the ordinance, you don't have to reread all that, because it was just read into the record.
All right. Anybody got any questions?
Okay.
Bob, you good with the changes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to, oh, what am I doing? Approve ordinance OR-2020-05-04 amending the village charter to change the form of government from mayor council to council manager as amended.
Further discussion? Actually, I would make one quick point. I don't believe this was ever said that we were gonna take this to a vote of the community and stuff. This was always brought up and always been discussed and stuff. So just to be clear, it was, I don't think, I think we, I heard some chatter about that this had to go through for the community to decide, and I think, based on what we were doing, this, this is improving our, our community by allowing less power to the people who do get elected and that sort of thing. So I just wanna make that comment, thank you for that. All is in, further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have, do I have an ordinance number for this? If we do pass it, worry about it when we, if we pass it.
0505?
Could be 05.
0505.
Okay.
2020 0505.
All right, so discussion and consideration of ordinance OR-2020-05-05, allowing the mayor to vote on all matters. And I'll throw it out to anyone who wants to start, I know this is a little bit contentious. I'll start by saying, I think this was a lot of chatter about me asking for power. It actually doesn't, it was brought to me because of circumstances, unfortunately, council members taking advantage of two to one votes when they knew someone was gonna be absent, and it was brought to me by the councilman, who was the person who was absent, that this would never happen again. So we moved forward with it, and then, for whatever reason, he decided to change his mind, and it, but it never said it would go to that, and I think when the new body came in, you guys, we talked about this as an alternative to adding potentially another council member and expanding government, if you will, and which I do have some questions on that that relate to this.
So I think, right, so I think that's kind of where, when we started talking about changing the charter to allow the mayor to vote on all matters, this was when we were under the assumption that it would be for council members mayor. And we have, we've done the referendum to add a fifth council member. It passed, so now my understanding is that we have to add that fifth council member, and that's where I think there's been some confusion of if we have to, when we have to do that, and if we do that, then I think there's some question of, then do we allow the mayor to vote on all matters, because there's a potential for a three to three tie with six voting members. So can you clear up the referendum and the addition and kind of get us straight there?
Yes, the...
Is that good? Because I feel like, I feel like that's kind of where we got some confusion.
Yeah, and I think, again, the original reason why we were doing this is so we could build our council, so if you had one council member who happened to be absent, this was the whole driven reason we were going to, we were adding it, but then we were talking about districts too and how that all works and stuff. So there's, there's a lot of questions, is, okay, can we appoint, is the question? Do we have to wait to the election for that fifth, because we still have a fourth one to fill that's out there?
Yes.
Then there's the other one, and how that, how are we, do we have to adhere to that?
All right, yes, first of all, you have a vacancy, a recent vacancy in pursuit of your last order. You were waiting at least 30 days, and that was under advice from me, so you have a vacancy and you should appoint that. The next one is the more direct question that you asked regarding the referendum. Most of the time to add a council seat wouldn't get a referendum, it would be voted upon at council, and then at the next election, it would be voted upon. Either way is fine, either is legal, y'all did it, so it was voted upon at the election. Well, when we researched that, realized, yes, you have another council seat, you will have to appoint, actually not appoint, you will have to fill, but that will be filled by election, because the commentary and the statutes, when you look at them as a whole, they say, well, they shouldn't be able to gain the system by picking when this additional council seat is added, so anytime you add, the new council member takes place at the next election. Because otherwise, if it wasn't that way, you could pick and choose when to do it based upon the time parameters and be able to appoint instead of having it by the people. So either it's another two years, the commentary that I looked at, and I concur with the analysis, was it's still up to the people to fill, which isn't at the next election. Next question is, can you, are you bound by that? And I don't think y'all are saying, are we bound by it, but you have to fill, yes, the referendum has passed, if either you as a council voted to change your form of government or the people, once you pass that, it's effective for two years from implementation. The statute goes on to say, expressing with the council member, it is two years from the date they take office. So you will not fill or appoint, the people will have filled that next council position at the next election, and then your form of government adding that council seat has to remain for two years after that person takes office.
Okay, so we have to add, so we have to have the fifth spot.
You do, it has already been voted upon, and that will be valid for two years after the person takes office.
Okay. So I think that's kind of where some of the confusion was.
When will the, when will the fifth person actually fill the seat?
At the 21 election.
21 election. 2021. There'll be a spot for that to be...
For the fifth?
Yes.
Or the fourth?
The fifth and the fourth.
Well...
Well, that'd be...
Yeah, because that's an appointment, and that will be, that appointment will be...
That appointment comes up in 2021. It just happens to come up, yeah. You're right.
Yes, the person, the person that we are appointing's...
Term.
Thank you. Term is 21, because that's what my term is. So then there will be three spots, there will be three council positions at the 21 election and the mayor.
And so my concern was, and being around as long as I've been around, is there's no, remember we talked about how the pendulum swings every two years?
Oh, yeah.
Right? So your mayor has to run, we don't wanna change that every two years, no problem with it, it's a pain in the butt, but I'll do it if I'm gonna run. And all the other mayors had to do it too, and future mayors will have to do it. Don't wanna change that. But the council members, they run for four years, good for them, they get elected, they're in there for four years. However, now, this next 21 election, clarify this, all will have a four-year term.
Except the mayor.
Yes. Except for the mayor.
Right. You will appoint the vacancy, at all likelihood, fairly soon. That will run to the remainder of the term of which they're filling, which will be until the 2021 election, and that'll be, whoever runs for that will run for a full four-year term along with the other two.
So, again, being what I've seen and how you're successful in a small town like this is you run as a group, and, you know, you find two like-minded buddies and you run. So the problem with five is, I always said, if we're gonna go to five, we should go to six, and only because you would have another thing, because remember, right now, it's set up where every two years, if the community gets it wrong and they see it going down the wrong path, it takes forever to get things done in government, we all know that. But you've got four years to do something with some bad apples, you can't get rid of them, you're not gonna get rid of them, because they're in there and they're gonna do what they wanna do, and that's the unfortunate thing. That's what, and that's why I said, well, if we get to five, then let's do districts and at-large things, which we talked with the school of government of going to and trying to help us with that. Are we even big enough?
It's complicated.
It's very complicated, but it makes it more difficult to get a group of three to, maybe from the same neighborhood, to run, be very effective with their propaganda and get out there and get the message, and all of a sudden, they're, they're running everything that they think. It was, it was a beautiful situation with four council and, you know, and the pendulum would swing every two years, because that mayor had to run with two separate council every two year. Now, once that third councilman gets in there, they're in, all three of them in there for four years.
But that was planned, was to do a sixth council spot in 23, and the reason that we didn't do it in 21, because you just said, if we're gonna go to five, we might as well go to six, and that was the plan, to then add the sixth spot in 23.
So the problem with that is, then why did we make it? Because it may not pass in the end. That sixth council, why didn't we just do a fifth and sixth council?
Because we didn't want four people plus the mayor in the 21 election.
Well, it would've, well, it would've been three people running for council.
Four. If you added the fifth and sixth spot, it would've been four plus the mayor.
Right, but their terms would be, certain terms would be different. They wouldn't all be the same.
They would all be the same. If they all ran in 21, they would all be the same.
You would stagger it, you would be in 2023, then you would bring in the other, the sixth person.
That's right, that's, that's the plan to do that. That's why we haven't added the six, because we were gonna add it for the 23 election.
So we should just be hopeful that that passes, then the referendum that we get the six, otherwise, you're gonna have a situation, and I, you know, communities sometimes get it right, get it wrong. This was a kind of a nice, because we're so small, and good luck getting six people to run for office anyway, here in this town. But that pendulum swung every two years, now if this doesn't pass...
Well, I mean, we're in a position that we're going to have five.
Yep.
So now what's on the table is, do you allow the mayor to vote on all items?
Right.
So thank you for that clarification, because I think when we broached this subject, we were under the assumption that we didn't have to. It was a, let's see, let's kind of see where it goes, and then we can make the decision, and that's when we started talking about adding, allowing the mayor to vote on all items, when we thought it was going to only be four instead of five.
Right, and you just don't want it divided, go.
Because it would be... Because there could be six and six.
I, as I mentioned before, I wanna be, I wanna be very clear in that, just saying the word council member and mayor, and it's not Mayor Polino or Councilmember Mark Lees or anything like that. These are positions we serve, you know, we deserve as community. These will continue to move on, and elections have consequences, and if you go with someone, you should vet who you're going for. But I also believe that you shouldn't have a locked government, I mean, or divided government. If you got three on one side and three on the other side, you're just not gonna get stuff done. That was the reason this whole, this whole thing got, kind of got tabled. And it is complex, because you start talking about how the terms kind of line out with one another and how it can be, how it can, because of the terms, can be disrupted as well. If you've got four people on there for the same amount, where you can really screw some things up. Or you could do some great things.
You can do great things. It's not all bad.
So, yeah, it's not all bad, but based on some of the previous administrations, I guess, there were some serious issues that, that could've been, that could've been resolved and certainly would not have cost, I mean, some of these issues cost the town, we're talking about a budget, some of these issues costed the village of Marvin over $100,000, well over $100,000, because the structure was the way it was. And that's, that's the seriousness of this matter and the reason it was brought up. I don't take it lightly, but I just wanna get it right, not for me, but for the future of Marvin, so that it doesn't cost $100,000 in legal fees because of a poor structure.
And to add to that, with the structure we had, one of the things, when you had four council members, and this is why, and it became very clear to me within the last six months, why I felt with a four-person council, the mayor should vote, and here's why. We just witnessed a councilman, for whatever reason, maybe it was a protest, maybe not, he refused to show up, which left, and then we had another individual, I had to call every time, because he had health issues. Do I pick him up? Do I drop him off and stuff? I wanted him here because we needed quorum. But more importantly, with the mayor not being allowed to vote, when we had one individual protesting not being there, and when the other one, it was, it was a crapshoot if he was gonna make it because of health issues last minute, it left us many times with just two council member and a mayor. Then we got into an issue where you shared with us, you can vote, you can have a quorum, but you can't do anything tied to a financial matter.
Or ordinance.
Or ordinance, because I have no voting matter. So going forward, if we were to keep it at four even, I would say, because given what you're saying, the mayor really doesn't need to vote, you have a split, you never have a split essentially.
Right.
In the five, but if it goes to six, you have a split. But in that situation, let's just say there were two individuals that were like-minded and two other individuals that were like-minded. Quite frankly, the way this system was set up, those two individuals who weren't aligned with this tiebreaker, which would've been the mayor, their form of protest could be just what the former councilman did and not show up, both of them not show up continuously. Think about that. You have two councilmen, you would, you do, but we could not do anything. So it, I felt it was important, especially going through a full year of watching a councilman basically, and I think he shared with us at the election, that if things went the right way, maybe you'll see him a little more often. So he had an agenda for whatever reason, and he didn't show up, but we gave him an opportunity to speak and he didn't. I'm trying to protect this community, to your point, going forward, it's not about me, but if you're telling me that I can't vote and we can't get, what if we're in budget season, and we had one leaving us, another one with health issues, and we couldn't get the budget done? We'd be shutting down.
What is quorum term to five council mayor?
It's gonna be majority, so it would be four, because it would be, I've gotta look at that right quick.
I gotta shoot.
Yeah. It should be a majority of the council members plus the mayor.
Yes.
So it should be four.
So if, so if three council members...
Or vacant seats.
So if three council members show up, the two people say, I don't wanna come to work, you guys are, I don't like the hall, whatever, two people don't come, then we can't do anything, because we don't have quorum for, we have quorum to have a meeting, because we'll have the mayor, but we won't have financial quorum.
You have, I know, that's the fun thing about a quorum, you have a quorum where you should announce for a public meeting and not have a, you'll have a meeting but not a quorum at times. And then the financial quorum, you're right, is a different number, you have to have one more council member to be able to vote on financial matters and ordinance.
So if we have, so if we have, so come 21, we're going to have five council members. Two of those council members aside, for whatever reason, they don't wanna show up, they don't wanna come, or they're sick or something terrible has happened. You have three council members and the mayor, you'll have a meeting quorum, but you will not have financial quorum. If the mayor had the right to vote, then you would have financial quorum, because you would have four voting members. I'm not stating this as fact, I'm asking this as a...
Yeah, no, and I'm looking at my...
I know, I'm just saying, I don't, I'm asking the question, because I don't know. And it's not like we're just pulling these scenarios out of our, you know, out of the skies. This stuff has happened multiple times, multiple meetings, where we haven't been able to get stuff done. You want me to pull you up?
No, that doesn't, the quorum is a majority of the council, a majority of the actual membership of the council plus the mayor excluding vacant seats, so majority, if there's six, it's gonna be four.
So if, so if the mayor is allowed to vote on all items, on all agenda items, they get the same rights as a council member, so then if two members of, you've got five council members, if two members of council are out and you've got three members and the mayor, would that be...
Yeah, that would still be, that'd be your four.
Because he, because the mayor has the ability to vote on all matters.
The funny thing that I've always said about this whole thing is, it really doesn't matter, when we had the four council and the one mayor, and I was trying to save the town money by not going to a fifth, by allowing the mayor to vote, if you think about it, there's no scenario you could... There's no scenario you can present to me that would gain the system. Because if you had two councilmen, you're conspiring when one was out to do what they did two years ago. They cost us $100,000 by resigning.
And $75,000.
An additional $75,000.
An individual.
Yes, a councilmember. Yes. $75,000, I was in a lawsuit. That could have been avoided if I had the ability to vote, just by saying no. And by saying no, I'm not, we're not gonna prove that. And let's just table it until a whole council gets here and we can make a decision. Do we believe what you did was lawful and was this appointment lawful? I mean, that costs a money. It's, I talked to you earlier about this. Not only the $75,000, but the hundred, over $100,000, I can promise you, in legal fees of getting all the information of something that just didn't happen. But it, it, it just burns me because there's no scenario you can present with a four councilperson and the mayor. If there's a split vote, I'd break the vote. But if you have three councilpeople, it doesn't matter if I vote no with Kim on a vote, that three council's gonna win the day. And if it's a 4-0 vote, they still win the day. There's no scenario you can put, and it's not a power grab, but it does protect the community in situations like that where there are nefarious situations where they just planned this event and I told you it was gonna happen before it happened and we witnessed it happen in front of us and I protested it then and all it was a matter of if the mayor could have a vote. Because I could have shut that down and they would have never been able to do that. And I wouldn't have even shut it down. I would have said, you know, let's table that. Thought of you resigning and let's, before we appoint, let's bring the whole council in and then we'll have a full vote. So I didn't have a vote to do that.
Well, the, the different rule with the quorum is a little bit different than the vote on the financial matters. So it's a little bit different on appointment of a councilmember and that probably in an ordinance or a financial matter.
But we can't do any, business can't go on anything financially related, correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct. Yeah, correct. I think you can still adopt the budget ordinance. That's a different one, but that's once a year.
Hey, read that one ordinance. That's how I done it. 1597.
That's what I just said.
Oh, okay.
You can still adopt the budget ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
She backed me up.
Thank you.
She backed you up with that ordinance.
Well, it's because I was mandated by law. That's weird. You were looking at that now. Was just stating that. Yeah, your budget ordinance can because it has to be passed. And then, and then certain things with the manager form of government that are budgeted will be able to go on, but it can still, still mess you up.
Yes.
Because you need to be able to operate. But you should have a council that's gonna come and be a quorum so you can operate. It's always gonna be bad if you have, well, two or three people missing meetings regularly.
Initially, we thought the answer was a bigger government, so this would not happen where one person announces at the beginning of the year when we set the meetings and when we're gonna be gone. He announced every year for years that he's gone the whole month of this month and that's when they, they took advantage of the situation and, and did what they did. And it led to us paying out of our pocket, the constituents' pocket, a $75,000 bill for one issue and then all the other. And it could have all been avoided, but something as simple as a vote.
I'm still confused on how, how a figure was even just pulled out of the air.
Well, it's not.
I get it. I get it. I just.
I want to talk about that too.
I just, I do want to make, I do want to make one statement because obviously I'm not the mayor. But I'm also just a councilmember that'll be here for a period of time. And my statement would be that, that the change that we will vote on, on this and the change that will happen is not, is not for me or for, for the mayor Joe or councilmember Kim and councilmember Mark Elise. It's for the future of Marvin. Whether I'm here or not or any of the people that are currently here, this is to hopefully protect the future councils and the future mayors and that, that government can run and it can run efficiently, effectively. And by no means I get kind of twisted when someone throws a name and then we start talking about this specifically and how this, how this change comes about. And, you know, when I see the, when I see this in this, the propaganda that was sent out, that names are shoved in there and I just think it's wrong because it's not a one-time thing. And quite honestly, in the future, if someone gets in and sees that it's ineffective, that council and mayor and whatever can, can certainly change it. Am I?
After two years.
Yes. Once you change your form of government, it's gonna be effective for two years.
So in two years, guess what? There you go. So this isn't like we're etching in stone and doing it. Let's just, let's, I would like to see a more fluid form of government and where it's to a point where things don't happen that have happened before that cost the village a significant amount of money. And that's how I'm gonna say it. Bob?
I've appreciated everybody's comments and I, you know, thoroughly thought this through and.
I was gonna say something, but it ran out of my head, so I don't remember what it was. I mean, I do, I do think it's important. Oh, and, and I want to know what the mayor has to say. Like, I want to know what their thoughts are on what we're voting on. And if they don't have a, a say in it, you know, if their vote doesn't count, then I'm not gonna know what their thoughts are going forward. And if I'm, when I'm not on council, then I'm talking to mayoral candidates, like their position on stuff doesn't really matter. I mean, it really doesn't if they're not voting on everything. The other thing is, I know that there's a concern about a 3-3 tie. If that happens, that's the time that we have to come together and we have to work it out. We have to figure out what's best for the village, put differences aside, and serve the people. So if it's, if it's a matter of, you know, not being able to get stuff done, then at that point, you know, you just, you have to get it done. Because the constituents, you know, are relying on us to have their best interests at heart. And so if that happens, then, you know, the council at the time has to suck it up and figure it out. So. You got anything else?
Well.
Bob?
You know, I could say that I appreciate everybody's, you know, like I kind of said before, I know from which this was born from. And it's, it's, you know, in the case where it's important, that's what Chaplin said in terms of the fifth councilperson. And I said, I, I understand from which this all came from and, you know, everything's been said. I mean, I think everybody's did a good job of expressing out the deal.
Quick, quick question, Chaplin, for you, or maybe you may know this. The current situation is I only vote in the ties and I also can vote on appointments, correct?
No.
Yeah, it does.
No, only in a tie, ties.
In a tie appointment. So voting even for someone on a board position or anything?
Yeah, yeah. Remember, you changed that rule.
We did change.
You did change.
But that's what it originally was when I, that's what I know. I remember having that ability at one point. And then the last council, two councils ago, removed that ability, along with council comments, by the way, because they didn't like hearing from me at all. But I'm still here and they're not. But I don't know how much longer that will be. But it's, again, it's not about me. It's about what I've seen and we're trying, to your point, trying to protect the community. So, and I'm just gonna leave it at that for a vote. Then we've got three councilmembers here. And if somebody wants to call for vote or table it, you tell me what, where you want to go with it.
You want to talk about the amended ordinance?
Yeah, you did it last time and I'll look through. If you were to pass it.
You're gonna do this one?
Yeah, I was gonna have you do it and I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read through while you're doing it and make sure we're on the same page.
Okay, all right. So the amended ordinance would be ordinance 2020-05-05, and it would read, "An ordinance amending the charter of the village of Marvin to change the form of government to allow the mayor."
No, 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 no. Just, just to allow the mayor.
It still would be an optional form, would it not? It's still a change of government.
Well, it's a separate ordinance.
Well, it does change the form of government technically. But we could, I would just say to allow the mayor.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So let me repeat that then. An ordinance amending the charter of the village of Marvin to allow the mayor to vote on all matters. The first section would read, whereas NC general statute 160A-1018 requires the village to select if the mayor is given the right to vote in all matters before the council or is limited to voting only in a tie. Second paragraph would read, whereas council unanimously approved resolution of intent to consider an ordinance, strike subsection I, to change, I'm sorry, not to change.
To allow.
To allow mayor to vote on all matters, not just when there is a tie and. Everything else would remain. Section two would be taken out.
Section three would be.
Would remain.
Would be added back in.
Would be a section two at that point. And then section four would then become section three. However, we would remove the section that says, "Amending the village charter to change," I'm sorry, "to change the form of government to cancel manager."
Correct.
That's the one that's being presented as amended.
Okay.
Do you need to read off of what she changed?
No, I can just say it's a statement that is believed.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the village charter to allow the mayor to vote on all matters, which is OR-2020-05-05 as amended.
Further discussion? I'll make one point myself again that this was never, even though there's chatter out there about this, it was gonna go to the community. There was nothing said when they changed their voting power, when they took away my voting power. There was no, that would have been technically a charter change, but the last council did that and took away my powers and took away the ability to even speak in a council comments. And, you know, so I don't know which way you guys are gonna vote. And it, to me, doesn't matter. I just, pointing out that the, the issues of how there was a chatter out there about how we promised. And I don't know about you, Kim, but I don't remember a promise. I just knew, knew the vote didn't go down, right? And there was no promise or anything.
I want to change one thing, make a correction of something you just said. And that correction is removing the word "I" and putting in the word "mayor."
Okay, I'm sorry. Good point.
Because again, I want to be clear, I want to be very clear that this is not about anyone sitting in here. It's about the, it's about the positions moving forward, the position itself, not the person. The person won't be here. I won't be here. 10 years from now, I won't be here.
They can change it anyway.
Whatever period of time. And they can change it anyway. So I want to be clear on that so, so people can look at it and go, you know what, I think we're being very logical and responsible and with it. So that's my, I'm moving forward.
Any other discussion? Alls in favor of the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
All right. Now, do we need a super majority or do we just, did that go down?
Here's.
Two by majority.
The motion passes with.
2-1 vote.
A 2-1 vote. All right. Next up on the agenda.
Appointment of Christina Amos as village manager and assigned.
I think you're supposed to do the manager and powers and duty. Is that the same thing?
Appointment of Christina Amos as the village manager and assigned statutory authority under NC GS 160A-148. And that would be.
So moved.
Oh, so moved. Sorry.
Alls in favor?
I mean, do we need to, I mean, we don't need to talk about that, do we?
Just sorry.
I'm sorry.
All right. So it's just a move. We don't have to have discussion on that?
So moved.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Sorry.
Congrats on your new role.
So do we have to call you town manager now?
Mm-hmm.
Village manager?
Yeah.
Oh, you've got a new name tag.
You gotta spend money on new, new cars.
All right. Can we keep going?
Congratulations, Christina.
There we go.
All right. You got it?
Yep.
Okay.
Finally found it. Sorry. Next up, we have number five, authorized manager to revise personnel policy to reflect change in duties of manager.
So moved.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 That was number five.
Number five.
The manager to revise the personnel policy. And the duties of the manager, okay? Motion, did you, aye or nay on that one? Robert, Bob?
Bob, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consideration, next up on, number six, consideration of Union County sheriff agreement, addendum, and authorized administrator to execute agreement contingent upon attorney review.
Just wanted to note, Chaplin and I discussed this earlier today. And there's one change that we want to make in the section that I've highlighted on page one, where it talks about the three.
Just one?
We wanted to add one, one more addendum. So on the addendum, it kind of covers a lot of the things that y'all had mentioned in the last discussions about the contract, with the exception of that part that we highlighted, to change some verbiage of that three deputies. The three deputies was contingent, if you read it in its entirety, it's kind of amusing because it says it's contingent upon approval of certain, certain ordinance that had to do with annexation, which I don't think ever passed. So technically, the agreement needs to be modified anyways because that ordinance didn't pass. So we want to just add some language in this addendum to address the two officers and not three in the addendum that's presented to you all.
Correct. And to clarify, they want to leave it up to three so they can expand this with that amendment. But we want to clarify also that you will only pay for the actual number of officers.
Yeah.
Because it says in one place, you're gonna pay for three. And then it says in another place that you're gonna, that it's based on the officer.
And I had that on page one of four at the bottom. The sheriff agrees to station three. And I would say up to three, but no less than two. How about that? Because we're asking for another one. Right? So up to three, but no less than two. Is that fair?
Yeah, we can, Chaplin and I can work on some language.
I'm just curious why we're using 2009 contract.
Because they haven't updated it. Seriously.
I know, but I was just like, there's gotta be so many more. I mean, my biggest concern is you got other communities that are out there saying that they're probably gonna either reduce their sheriff's officers or get rid of it. And guess what happens to us? Based on this contract, if they get, say Wesley Chapel gets rid of their officer program and they just rely on Union County, which they still pay taxes for, then when our officer is on a full-time duty and there's a call on Wesley Chapel at Target or wherever, we're losing our guy here. And how is that documented and do we get repaid?
You do not. There are some here that said their day-to-day duties should be here, but in the event of a call, and a call is generally a major event, yes, under section two, they can go.
We don't get compensated for it. That's the whole issue I have with this contract, the way it's written. Our officer, we pay additional, because we, we dropped it, we still get sheriff, we may not get as good response, but we still get officers because we pay Union County tax, which includes a sheriff's department with officers. And if we add one and a community gets rid of theirs that's right next door, and they're a much bigger town than we are and they've got retail, they're, they're gonna see more calls, they drop their program, our guy's on duty, he goes over there. Why are we paying for this? That was my argument with Sheriff Cappy when we were talking about it. It makes no sense because it's, it's not in this agreement to address it when they. It makes no sense, cause it's, it's not in this agreement to address it when they have to, and, and if they have to go, great, I want them to respond to something that's an event.
You, you want something to say if they respond to other incidents that are exigent circumstances or emergencies or, and that, this is.
And everything, if they leave this territory, when they are on duty for us, we should be somehow compensated for the hours that they are gone, because we as taxpayers are paying for additional service. We're not paying for, to help out the other communities, and that's what it's doing, especially if they drop their program. If they drop their sheriff's program right now, the way it stands and the way this contract is bred, there, there's no benefit, there's no benefit for us to add another officer because he's gonna be getting calls, cause I guarantee you, they get more calls because of Target and shoplifting and stuff like that. I've talked to them over there, talked to the councilman over there, and his whole issue is the cost. We're not even concerned about the cost so much, because it is what it is, it costs X amount, we're gonna fund it, but when I can't be compensated when that guy has to leave? You're opening up a can of orange.
So I, I've discussed this with Sheriff Kathy, and he was adamant that, if you look at page two and number eight, where the village agrees to pay for the county for 90% of the actual cost, this is kind of where he encompassed some of that, um, those out-of-.
Ten percent.
With 10%.
So that covers a 10%, we pay a hundred thousand dollars, in fairness, we pay a hundred thousand dollars for new officers, and you're telling me if another community right next door drops their program, which supposedly would help, and they lose, then, then when they're on duty here and we're paying for them and we know they're supposed to be here, they're gonna get a call there, and there's, that, that's, that's covered in the 10%. That, that number needs to change.
You can terminate the agreement quicker now, the other thing is, we could try to work in some limitation on when they can get called, but that's gonna take a little bit longer than, we probably need to bring this back to you.
Yeah, if it, yeah.
Uh, cause earlier we were trying to do minor changes and have you authorize the town manager to execute, but if we're talking about broader ideas, we probably need to discuss those and come back with another addendum.
I mean, I, I mean, I'm with, I'm with the mayor on this. I think it's, I think it's ridiculous that we're paying.
You didn't have a good answer either.
No.
For, for asking that question.
No.
Well, you should get, you should get the same additional help if you have a major event. But y'all want to limit this somehow to, you want it to be a major event, not to them going over there all the time.
Well, right, and I mean, if it's like a shoplifting thing or something, I don't want, you know, Stephen pulled from over here to go over to Wesley Chapel or Weddington or Middlesprings or whoever needs it, when they're on duty for us, because we are paying extra to have our own deputies, own deputies, and so we need to be compensated for the time that they're away from here. And, and I mean, and I think that includes, you know, their training time and stuff, cause there's a lot of train time that they're training that they're not here, so.
And I would guess, I would go on and walk hard and guess, the people that took that survey and said, I'm willing to pay for another officer, or assuming they were actually gonna get that officer and not have it, you know, we pay for it, he's there, he's available, but 50 per she, excuse me, 50% of the time is gonna be over where, there, there's a couple towns that we don't, again, have a cash register yet, that may change, and that may change the dynamics of where crime is, I don't know if it's gonna end up there or not, I doubt it, but it's.
It's gonna be easier for them, because they have budgets too, and that's why they put 90% to try to set the parameters of when somebody leaves and start adjusting credits. It's gonna get hard to say, well, how much?
No, I understand that. Have you been in on these conversations with?
Not, not enough, and I'm learning.
I don't know how Sheriff Kathy's gonna take, I'm just being honest and frank about the conversation that we had, he was pretty adamant that, that's not.
So we go a couple months, and we see on average that out of the 40-hour shift, 10 hours are being spent somewhere else. Are we gonna, we have the opportunity to go back and say, we need to figure this out because we're paying, or give us credit, 10 hours of credit for an officer to be here at a staggered time and stuff or whatever, I mean, just.
I mean, we've gotta figure something out. I mean, I, I wholeheartedly agree with the mayor.
We're, we're stuck because we have no one else to go to, by the way.
Yeah.
Well, and then I'm just going out some suggestions, some ideas, why don't we review the out-of-calls, like, to my annual or every few months, to see exactly how much it is?
I think we should be, definitely be doing that anyway.
Okay, for sure.
I mean, it's taxpayer money, they're expecting to get an additional officer, I would like to provide for you.
An additional point would be that, um, you got something else? I, I, I would never want a, and I think I've made this point before, I would never want one of, someone in Marvin to make a phone call when someone just got dispatched to somewhere else, and that, and that time is sitting there going, there's no one to call. I mean, to me, I understand the budgetary, and I understand the financial part to it, totally agree with what you're saying, but again, you're going to have a call, and I hope it never comes up, cause you're gonna have a call from someone here. And that hurt, that, they're not gonna be able to react to it because someone, someone's, because someone is somewhere else. And that could be life and death, it could be a break-in, it could be whatever the case may be, and I don't want that constituent to come back to us and go, why didn't you manage that?
Especially, and here's, they've got all the data, they can present, he presents it to us, thank you, by the way, for your data, do you present, when crimes happen? We can research and find out through their data when crimes are happening. That, guess what? That's when we want that extra officer here. If we're hiring an extra officer, makes no sense to bring him and have him scheduled, even though I don't even know how much control we have over the schedule, but if crime rates are high at 2:00 in the afternoon, cause everyone's gone to work, that was back in the day, I guess, but if that's, if that's the, the reality, then I would think we're adding another officer, let's look at the data and says, when do crimes happen? And that's when we would want that second officer, so, because 40 hours is only 40 hours, there's a lot more hours in the week than 40 hours, it's 24 hours in the day, you almost need five officers, I think they said.
Yeah, but that's what, that's what Christina and Stephen do now.
We do that now.
I know, I know, but I would want some saying that when we would want those off, that second officer to be here.
I hope we will.
And if that's the case, if the crimes are the most likely to happen then, and we're seeing that, that, you would assume it would be at the next town too, that they're gonna happen at that time, and they're getting pulled away every time, that, it just makes no sense to me, so.
So in, so we do, Stephen and I do that now, we've actually already had a conversation about exactly what it is you're talking about, and, you know, I told them, I said, I would assume that, exactly what you just said, where, to look at the higher call volumes, we'd like to see more presence during those higher call volumes, as opposed to having an officer here from 1:00 AM to 4:00 AM when nothing's happening, when no one's gonna see it. So in the, um.
You don't need 41 I'm looking for.
Oh, sorry. In the addendum that you see, there's, um, a section here that talks about number two, final authority over deployment of other duties, um, shall remain within that lieutenant. This is where you and the lieutenant Kazaa.
Yeah.
And I would have a conversation in which we've already kind of started talking about, so we would definitely have authority to have say-so in that schedule.
That's paragraph one of the addendum, where you have the authority.
Two, two.
And they have to have.
Sheriff's office has five.
And they have to have final authority because they're under their control.
Sure.
Uh, it's a, a legal thing as well.
And, and, and by the way, councilor staff can't direct them to go over to Joe Carr and stuff, they, we have no direction on any of that, they do, we can suggest, but, you know, wherever the speed is.
So from what President Brian Kazaa has told me, um, they're looking at the hours possibly being seven to seven, um, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, that's right in line with peak times as always during the day. Basically, me and Deputy Gals would work opposite shifts, like, the day that he works, I'll be off, so there would be somebody here every single day. Every day during the week, there would be a deputy here. So like.
And those 12-hour days.
12-hour days, seven, seven.
Every day?
Every day, there would be somebody here every single day. So.
And, and there'll be, and there'll be people, and, and you'll have people here doing spot speed limit checks at like random times throughout the night as well.
Yeah. I mean, there's other deputies that come here all night long and do that, there's a senior deputy right up the road right now, stopping cars looking for drunk drivers, right now, over here on, uh, near Marvin Creek. I was looking at the map, and he's sitting right over here. There's people here all.
Don't people that now? Want to get them.
He's in front of our car, you're not gonna see him if you drive by, and you think he's just a citizen, but, I mean, he's there right now.
Oh, there's cars.
Probably want those shady cars.
What cars are open now, right?
People drive and go to the past house, they go to.
I was gonna say, there's a lot of that, except for this is a copy.
So, so should this.
Okay, alright. So can you, can you guys kind of work on this a little more?
Yeah, I think we, I think we need to, based on that.
I'm sorry, I'm passionate about that, but that's been, that's just been a thorn in my side for years.
Alright, so we'll work on that one.
We'll try to do it with me.
Alright, so next up, we have, um, so we're tabling that then?
Yes.
No action to be taken on that. Um, next up is consider approval of revised contract and addendum and award to kinetic wind stream at the increased amount of $6,725.88 for three years and authorize the administrator to execute the agreement.
So I just wanted to, real quick, open this up, this is an item that y'all have already looked at, um, it wasn't.
I thought we approved it.
You did, and there was a slight increase, um, and there was some language that y'all wanted to make sure was in the contract, that basically said, if we move, you're not gonna charge us anything more. So once we got into some nuts and bolts and things, and the Chaplain reviewed it, there were some changes that were made, so if you want to just highlight the changes that were made, that would probably, um, be the best thing to do.
Um, if you look at the addendum to the agreement, everything in the addendum is what the changes in the con, in the current contract that you have attached in the packet. So if you just kind of read through that, um, one of the things is, uh, the agreement will automatically renew for successive month-to-month terms, whereas in the contract it says it will, um, renew, um, what was it, every, every year?
This quarter year, which is against our policy.
Which is against our policy anyway, um, and then, um.
And, and the main thing was the pricing, cause it, when you approved it, there was a, there's a temporary credit, but the way it looked is that the credit would go on throughout, so we had to assume a little bit higher, so we wanted to bring it back with the higher amount, and it's accurate.
And we actually budgeted, I think, we put this, this number.
We actually budgeted for, for the amount of the increase, so.
So wait, is it going up 6,725.88, or that's the total amount now?
That's the total amount.
So how much did it go up originally?
What did that, like, 40s?
Four something. What's, what's missing is a $300 credit that they were giving us, um, at the startup.
I know, but how much is, she's asking, what was it before and what is it now? What's the, what did it start at, did we approve?
Amount.
4,000?
48 something, 48, 75 or something like that.
So it's about $2,000?
Yeah.
And if we were to kind of break it all down, that $2,000 increase was because of what three major things, would you say? Because I didn't read through this whole addendum, I did not have time to do.
The reason it went up was, they, they were giving us a temporary credit, and we assumed that it would go throughout the life of the contract.
Oh, and it's like a one-time credit?
It's, he's gonna leave it in for his discretion.
It's like six months.
And I tried to write it into the addendum, and they're, no, 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 it was always agreed it was temporary. And I was like, well, I presented, and I confirmed it was supposed to be temporary.
Okay.
So then, then this is kind of my fault, cause I was like, well, the council approved it at 5, 200, let's say, I was like, they didn't approve it at 6,725, and we had the other changes, so we're like, well, let's just bring it back through.
Okay. It wasn't drastic.
But, but they, but they did agree to cover all the costs of moving the equipment, so.
Yes.
Yes, and if you move, you just have to agree to another term of, um, like, the three-year.
And that, and this will be better for connectivity for you guys, and. Yes, yeah, it would, it would move everything over to the fiber that's already been installed, and it will also move the phones over to the fiber.
When, when will that take place?
As soon as you all agree to the contract.
Okay.
And I, I think he said it might be, it, it will take them about 45 days to kind of move it over.
That could start immediately?
Yeah, that can start immediately.
And that whole, the building's built in 12 months from now, and we have a building, that whole transfer's still good to go with all the costs.
Yes, they'll, they'll take what's existing here and they'll move it to the new building. The only thing that they have asked upfront is that the people that are doing the internet and the phones be in contact with contractors, so that they have, have a voice as to where that equipment needs to go.
Sure.
Like, in, in the wiring, okay.
Crazy question, do they have a cellular plan that we can tie into our existing cellular plan?
Uh, you know, that's a good question.
I, I don't know, cause I know.
I do not know, I know Spectrum does, and, uh, but I don't know about Windstream. I, I do look into that.
It'd be nice to know, because we're paying, we had to pay an additional five grand for phones for everyone because of the public records request and past and submitting with phones and all that kind of stuff, so it's, it'd be nice to, to know, and maybe we can still use our phones, but have a different, under a different contract, so.
Okay.
See if that helps.
That'd be good. Alright, so, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the revised contract and addendum and award the kinetic wind stream at the amount of 6,725.88 for three years and authorize the village manager to execute the agreement.
Further discussion? Bob, anything?
No, sir.
Um, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And just for the record, I know, I can't vote until it's signed, and I haven't signed any documents technically, right? Cause I don't have a document, cause I don't even know, it's not even written up yet because we had to change it.
I think you can.
You can, based on, based on what you just motioned. Just on, based on what, what you.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, I didn't want to be overstepping, cause I just realized there were two things that went by that I didn't vote on.
Yes, and I, that's the reason I was like.
The effective date is today, and almost everything else, the effective date, you know, signed today, but it's not in the middle of the meeting that changes.
Not gonna change anything anyway, so.
I'll vote aye.
Let's go, next up is, uh, new business, uh, discussion consideration third-party communication.
Oh, I think this is all of us.
I know, but you.
Um.
Where do you start?
Where do you start? Yes, so, it was already talked about earlier in the meeting, that there was a email that went out, um, and again, I'm all about freedom of speech, say what you want to say, but when it looks like it's coming from the village, and we've had this discussion before, um, people think it's true, and the amount of phone calls and emails and text messages that I've gotten about it, um, has been a lot, and I appreciate that because that means people are interested. We need to, we as the village need to do a much better job of communicating with our constituents and getting information out there, because with, if you've got the choice of not getting any information and then you get something, then you're gonna assume that that's accurate. So I've been saying for, since I got on council, we need to communicate more, whether that's through an email newsletter, a paper newsletter, through social media, whatever it may be, we staff, council needs to do a better job of getting more information out. And we need to make sure that, I, I get emails from other towns that have synopsises for meetings, that have, um, what's coming up in meetings, and they send out all that information. Um, so we need to put together some sort of communication plan, um, to get our information, get the correct information out there, and, um, stop the nonsense that's, that's been disseminating through the village that's just wrong and inaccurate, so, um, I know you, you wanna go over some stuff, I didn't, I was gone, so.
No, I just think, I, I said before, just, uh, when there's an absence of information, um, someone fills that void, and, um, as happened just recently, that void was filled by misinformation, false information, propaganda, whatever the case, you know, whatever you want to choose the word to call it, um, but that's put back on us, and, um. Um, but, that's put back on us, and, um...
I agree.
Um, I, I would, uh, I will still, I know we're under these emergency orders, and, um, we have the COVID thing going on, but with social distancing and stuff like that, I, I think it's prudent for us to get ahead of this and catch back, let's just say catch back up to it. Um, whereas, uh, we do have scheduled time to, to meet. Social distancing, we, we have it. Um, but I think it's extremely important for us to make sure that, and I know this is something we've talked about, we've approved it, we've, we've budgeted for, we've done all this other stuff, we have to get a communication out that, and, and it's, and then we stick to it, because that is the most important thing, especially for us, that, A, transparency, and B, communication, um, that's what builds the trust in, in what we do, and serving, because we serve our constituents.
And, and a lot of this is gonna lie on your guys' shoulders. Staff's gonna have to do this. And, and, and I do think that having a synopsis from the meeting from before, you can have the agenda there, you can say what happened, you can hit highlights of it, it doesn't need to be the minutes, because that's, you know, that takes a little bit of time to get approved, but we need to hit some highlights, we need to send some stuff out. And, and the, the information that was going around over the weekend about the Village Center District is just wrong. Like, we've never seen, like, anything close to what has been floating around out there. Nothing has been approved. We are in the, we are in the feasibility stage of this, we don't even know if it's gonna work. And once we continue to move down that road, there are going to be multiple, multiple public input meetings so that people can come in and give their information. People thought that this was on the agenda to vote on tonight, it's not, and, and, and that type of information is what gets people so upset and just losing, like, their minds over this, because they think we're trying to pull a fast one on them. We're not, I want people's input on this. But again, we are in the feasibility stage, we don't know if it's gonna work. We're trying to find out information. We know landowners are interested in doing something, so that's where we are, we're trying to figure out, is it feasible? Can we do it? Will it work? And once we continue to move down that road, then we can, then we can get the public's input. Again, I'm glad people reached out, I'm glad people are asking questions, I'm glad people are interested, that makes me very happy. But the information that's out there is just wrong, and so we have to put something out, and it needs to go out tomorrow, and it needs to be, this is what's going on, you can post it on Nextdoor, you can send it out through mail, chill. If anybody's listening and you guys haven't signed up for the village email, please do so, um, because we do wanna get the constituents the information that is accurate. Um, and please continue to ask the questions if you are getting information, if it's right or not. If you feel like, wait a minute, this doesn't feel right, chances are it's not, so please ask us. Um, but we, we staff, council has to, you guys have to get stuff out, and we have to direct you to do so.
So, I'm all about logistics. That's great said, and it all makes sense. However, we gotta be pretty nimble, and we meet once a month for regular meetings to make decisions like this. So, what I'd like to see if we can is have some sort of ordinance where it allows us to do a straw poll, and because I just had a conversation with you the other day, we, we need to get something out there to say something from you, but I can't be directing you, cause I'm one person. You're having to report to five people, it's not fair, and we can communicate individually to each other, but we can't come together with what we're gonna put, and, and maybe with input from us, boom, 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 and you put out a letter, and you can do what's called a straw poll, and say, are you guys okay with this letter going out to the community? It, it just, it allows you to respond faster.
I know, but we got in trouble for a straw poll, cause somebody said that we had an illegal meeting through a straw poll.
No, straw polls are allowed.
Well, the policy was out.
You, you can't, you can have individual discussions, but you can't take action. This board can only take action at a legally called meeting, but, uh, if the town manager wants to do something and send out some communication, she can get some confirmation that, uh, village council would not find it objectionable.
What does that mean? Like, she can send out something and say, hey, what do you guys think? And I can email her individually, and...
Or, or she can, yes, you know, make sure that you would not object to what she's doing, and she also's gonna have a little bit more authority with day-to-day operations under the, the new statute, but she can, uh, okay, you know, I'm thinking of responding like this, do you, do you concur? And she can get that, but you aren't taking formal action, you're giving your personal opinion as one member.
Individually.
Individually, without a vote, but you really can't do a straw poll to, to get her to take action, but she can...
She can say, hey, I'm taking action, you okay with it?
Yes.
And then can I say as an individual person and say, well, I would say this, that's what I would say, and then if she incorporates that or not, and then in the end, she's sort of getting individual blessings, and she has the authority to respond to some of this stuff that's, I mean, it's, it's incredible. I mean, I felt bad, the one couple that I have, they seem like the nicest couple, and they're sending me this, this email, and it's, they're so misinformed, and I feel so bad, but you know what? It, it takes a month to come around, it just don't happen to be that this last information, and, and in all fairness, was very recent, and I had planned to do like Bob and be away and call in, but when I heard that this got so much, I wanted to be here. I wanted to be here to face everybody, I think you wanted to do the same thing, you would've wanted to call...
I was out of town.
Because the government now in the state of North Carolina allows it, that we can be afar and we, it's centered a meeting, but you know what? I drove four hours this morning to be here to face the individuals, because I wanted, this is absolute ridiculous that went out, but it takes us a month to respond if we have to vote. And there has to be some mechanism that allows you to respond on behalf of the community saying, the information, you know, I've been informed, and information that is out there is absolutely not coming from the village. And when they start putting Village of Marvin on it, and that, that low build looks exactly like ours, there's a trademark problem as far as I'm concerned, and there's, that has to stop. It has to stop, and we have to have a quicker mechanism to respond, and we never have.
Right.
And a monthly newsletter doesn't do it, because, and I'm all for saying what you wanna say, and you can say lies too, you have the right to, to, to put it out there, and lie, you absolutely have the right to lie to the community, but...
But it can't, but it can't look like it's coming from the village.
It can't, and it does right now, and that's what this, this couple is basically saying, and the phone calls I received were like, this looks like it's coming from the village? And no response.
Can I say, can I say something? I wanted to address just a couple of things, you had mentioned, can't seem to remind, about being ahead of the communication, and, you know, when there's a void, stuff is gonna get filled. There's, there's no way we, we would've known the Village Center stuff was gonna come up, so, um, I've got a response prepared for some of the things that we've heard, and I wanna go through that and kind of list some of those things and make sure we're all on the same page. But moving forward, uh, we don't mind putting together some type of communication plan slash policy and letting you guys look at it and make sure that we're all on the same page. But I guess where we have questions or where staff is not really clear is where's that line drawn for? What do we communicate? I mean, what, what are we gonna be proactive about? What exactly are we gonna be sending out? If we're doing some type of, um, after-agenda recap, or after-meeting recap, that, that's great, we need to know exactly what kind of things y'all want. Do you want every single detail, like every action that's taken? So that's kind of the, the gist for what's some of the direction that we're gonna need to create some type of policy or plan, so we know exactly what's being expected of us. Where it's gonna be posted? Is it gonna be Nextdoor, Facebook, on our residents list, email? What exactly is it that we're getting out, and how are we getting it out?
Okay. I, I think that, and those are all things that need to be figured out and discussed, and, but I don't wanna continue to kick this down the road, cause we've been talking about communication forever. So, my thought is that you put it out everywhere, in, any place that we have, whatever we have, put it out there, and I think you put a response out there from, from this Village Center District, which seems to have, you know, gotten completely out of control. But I also think that in that, and, and in the communication that goes out tomorrow needs to be, make sure that the source that you're getting your information from is, is from, is, is from official Village of Marvin information. So if we need to do something, I, I don't know what, I'm up for suggestions, but something needs to be out there that is, um, that makes it very clear that when we're sending stuff out, this is official, like, this is official, you know, and again, I'm up for suggestions, cause I don't know exactly what to do, I'm not a communications person. Um, but I think that in, in addition to that, we need to be sending out information, and I'm pretty sure we've done it before, I'm pretty sure that you've sent something out before, but I think this needs to be bold, highlighted, you know, multiple colors, whatever it needs to be done to, to get people aware that there is information that is floating out, around out there that is just wrong.
And, and, and again, to, to add to that about the source, you know what the number one question is from constituents? How'd they get my email? How'd they get my email? It's a big question, because we, you know, may have to admit that, that it's been compromised. That list is out and people have it, and they use it for their own propaganda. So it's even more important now to know that you may be getting information, and you gotta really dig, or take the time to dig, before you just respond in an email to everyone else and find out, is this, number one, who's the source, are they even identifying themselves?
Right.
Or are they hiding behind some sort of curtain? And then, you know, to your point, know the source, and then, you know, scratch your head and wonder how they got their email, but, you know, we, they trust, the community trusts us, they send their email, but I think it's been compromised. I think people have admitted to compromising it and getting emails.
Yeah. Let me, before you go through that, um, I, I absolutely think that we need to have a communications policy in place. I would start working on that for the work session. I know it's gonna be a crunch to do it, but I would come up with, and, and I'll, I'll email you some of my ideas that I have about, you know, what type of information, when to send it out, what are our, you know, top three things that we're working on that we feel like the, you know, community wants to know about, or top five things, or whatever it is, but I don't mind, you know, brainstorming with you guys to try to help figure that out, because I, I'm, think this is so important, um, and I'm, I'm tired of having bad information out there. And, and it's our fault, it's, it's, it's a hundred percent our fault, because we, we, and I've, I've said it for years, you know, and I know we're working on a website, and that's great, and we need to keep barreling through that, cause I was looking for stuff online, and I couldn't find stuff.
Go back to the budgets and having a staff member that can do it.
Right.
I mean, we're, your guys have been spread ten trees.
We have a new website.
To your point saying, sometimes you gotta, to have more staff.
Right now, I have to get everybody, I have to get permission.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying, I'm glad, I'm glad we're working on the new website, because I think that will be easier for people to get information, it'll be much easier to navigate, but stuff needs to be on our website, emailed out, Facebook, Nextdoor, Instagram, whatever we have, I don't know what we have, so...
So, I've, I have not read any of the Nextdoor posts, but I've just, I've talked to several citizens, and I've come up with a list of questions, and I just wanted to read them, read them out loud, and if y'all have any more that you wanna add, or anything that you wanna change, um, if that's okay.
Questions?
Like, like, responses, like a Q and A, like, frequently asked questions.
So I've got the questions, and I'll, I'll generate the answers, and we'll have it posted. What is or will be the location of Village Center District? Is Village Center supported by Marvin residents? What are the allowable uses that will be allowed in this corridor? Will big box stores be allowed? Has there been any officially approved zoning mats to the proposed district? Is there a plan to have a group hub on the Village of Marvin-owned property? What happened to the plan for the new village hall? What additional properties are being considered for the Village Center District? And what steps, what are the steps that remain in the creation of the Village Center District, and what's the anticipated timeline?
I would also put in there kind of like what the process is right now, like, we're feasibility, we're looking at options, we're talking to, um, you know, property owners, you know, kind of walk through what the process is, you know, planning board looks at it, but again, planning board is an advisory board, they make no decisions, they advise. Um, and then, you know, public input meetings, you know, that there will be multiple, like, I would kind of walk through what the steps are, and then say, this is where we are in the process.
Okay.
So that they can kind of get a visual for that.
And I have one more question about, I've read something about a seven hundred, or I've heard something about a seven hundred and fifty thou, fifty thousand dollar budgeted expenditure in the change budget, so I'm gonna put that out there.
Here it goes.
Is there any more questions that y'all feel hasn't been addressed?
I think, um, if we could put something in there on where we're at with the land use which, plan which, kind of you can address that, that number one, it hasn't even been settled yet, and before any of this gets done, the land use plan will have to be approved. And you can share where that's at, so some sort of question related to the process, and first things go through the planning board, land use plan gets approved, goes to us on their end, gets approved, then comes to us, and then, then we can start based on what final...
When, what was your question in there about a big box store?
Are big box stores allowed in the district?
Okay, and you should go ahead and just put in there that types of businesses have not been discussed.
I know what scares people.
On the council level.
Yeah, that scares people. Put that one out, I'm on record saying hell no for that.
That was in there too.
But, you know, I mean, that's, the reality is the misinformation that's out there.
Asian massage.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the list is pretty, um...
Specific.
You know what?
Auto parts store.
Quite honestly.
Yeah.
Y'all want me to put Asian massage through?
No.
No, we're not. I mean, like, that's the list.
You know what? I'm, I'm just telling you, I, I'm appalled by that a, a, a constituent would actually even put this type of propaganda out. That shows you the integrity of that people or peoples. I would also say that as you, as we start to put this out, that this is not just an individual approach to, you know, one individual person, we're putting the message out, that it's a multi-prom approach, because again, I think it's important that we get every venue, every avenue for, for people to come, whether it's getting the information out, but also accepting the information, and that's by doing, and I think that, by doing the, by doing the, the meetings that we had planned before, that, that clears up, that clears up a lot. And, and that should go out on a regular basis to, as a, as a communication. Just one reminder that tomorrow from nine to, from nine to twelve, you're gonna have your council members sitting in village hall, and that should go out every single week.
Yeah, Barbie, let's get that, um, calendar on, back on for, um, the, uh, work session.
The Coffee with Council?
Yeah, on, on the work session, and let's firm up those dates, um, so that we can start again in June, we can social, social distance in here, I mean, I feel like people are kind of, you know, moving towards that, and we put a hold on that until we figured out what was going on, so I, I absolutely agree with that. And then, and then, and then, yes, we can, I, I would say, I mean, I want, I want people to get emails from the Village of Marvin and be like, oh my God, they're sending out more information. I want them to get so irritated with getting more information, so they can't say, oh, well they don't send out anything. More, more is, more is better.
In, in a, in a positive light, because again, I think sometimes when you're handed lemons, and we were just shot with a bucket of lemons, is that if spot, it was spotlight shone on our inadequacy to get this done sooner rather than, than later, and for that, I'm, for that, I'm sort of appreciative.
Yep.
Um, again, I, I want to address every single person here in the village. I hope a thousand people are listening, seven thousand people are listening. And hopefully we've cleared up a lot of the, the miscommunication and information that's out there, and, uh, but we can't assume that we have tonight, and, but moving forward, there's gonna be a multi-prom approach to communicating and accepting information and providing information moving forward. Um, we wanna be as transparent and as above board, um, and held capital as possible.
I mean, catchy term for that meeting that we have, so a cup of joe, a joe is gonna go.
Coffee with council.
Coffee with council.
Coffee with council, alright. I'm just gonna dispel the, the myths.
Should we, should we budget money for all the coffee that we're gonna have, for all the constituents that are gonna show up?
We're gonna have a lot, yes.
You know, and I did this, I did this type of program.
Yeah, but that takes a long time, we'd be easier to make it happen.
I've had maybe two or three meetings in the four years. And I offered, all I had to do is make an appointment that would show up, but you're saying, we're gonna be here regardless. It's, it's, it's actually, hours sitting here, we could just be twiddling our thumbs, or we're gonna be here regardless.
I'll bring the bug, I got work I can do.
Honestly, I'm hopeful that the people that put this together will be the first Honestly, I'm hopeful that the people that put this together will be the first to show up and ask the questions. But I'm not holding my breath.
And that's a good point you make there. Those questions get directed to us, not the staff, to take up the staff time.
Correct.
You know? Or individuals who've taken advantage of taking up meeting times with staff from constituents because staff has their job to do. You have a question, you have a concern, come to the, come to the scheduled meeting and you want to, hey, and if that doesn't work for you, let us know, call us, we'll be with you in the evening.
Well, we have evening times too. We have day and evening times. Okay, good, good.
Is that Bourbon with Council?
Yeah.
You get people.
Yeah, you got more people.
You need, you need a bourbon. The bourbon doesn't work. What's it say? Cocktails with Council, there you go.
So, all right, moving on. Thank you, Kim, for making that, putting getting that on the agenda. Next up, discussion consideration for adoption, resolution number RS-2020-05-03, a resolution to oppose unnecessary expenditures related to COVID-19.
Hold on, Bob, are you awake? Are you still there? Are you okay?
I am, I have been focused and listened to every word that everybody has said.
Did you want, did you want to say anything on that last topic? I'm sorry.
You're so quiet.
I moved, I moved from the church and back home. I was over to the church, okay? I thought, I was wondering who everybody was.
He's kidding, right? Bob, you're so funny.
So my apologies for not addressing it, but I assume you're going to speak up if he wants to say something, so.
No, no problem. You can say.
There's a sign on this thing that tells you he's on the road.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. Looking at it. Okay. So you're good? Sorry, Bob.
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, so I read this resolution. I'd like to ask you, I think they did a nice job on it. This basically was, I was furious when we saw our government officials on the federal level, if you can think about this, take advantage of a crisis and all of a sudden pork, it became pork barrel spending and, you know, I want this, this, this added to the, this bill that was really designed to help people who are really in need and losing their jobs. So it's a resolution. I hope it catches on. I would ask that if we approve it, that staff sends it to other towns to see if they're willing to sign this too and maybe a groundswell agreement of communities that are basically telling the people above us at the state level and at the, more importantly, the federal level, that this is not the time to get your little project done with, I think the last one was done at the Kennedy Center. They wanted funding for the Kennedy Center. They had nothing to do with COVID and yet that was somehow still placed in the bill. And you know what? We have a voice, it's a very small voice, but the voice can be made louder by sharing resolutions like this that just say, no more pork spending, taking advantage of, you know, to further, and it doesn't matter. And it's almost, you almost need a promise that, you know, or maybe then pass their own bill that says, regardless of what party's in charge, when it comes to, if it does not directly related to the emergency going forward, whatever that is, it doesn't, it doesn't, you can't get a look. I get the fact that you got senators and congressmen out there that want to bring stuff back home to their state. I get that, but this is not the time for that. And it doesn't matter what side you're on. That's why I was asking for this. I think it was done fairly well. If you guys want to add or subtract, I think it makes what we're trying to get across, but I would like them to share it with other communities to see if it takes form, so.
Okay.
Any questions, comments on it? Bob?
I'm good. Good job. I mean, I appreciate you having sensitivity and heart to put this together. You know, during 9/11, we didn't have any bias to partiality about anything. I mean, it was, we had to, we had to take care of things for the sake of the country. And I don't understand why this became so partisan and other stuff that has nothing related to people as you're talking about not in there. So anyway, good job.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution RS-2020-05-03, a resolution to oppose unnecessary expenditures related to COVID-19.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Next up, consider approval of budget ordinance number OR-2020-05-02 in amount of $35,026 to reallocate funding in park operations, general government, legal expenses and professional services.
So real quick, just wanted to mention a couple of things. First thing, professional services, we've got 10,000 that's in there for the financial advisor for first try on, 10,000 for anticipated year-end costs for engineer expenditures. Wanted to explain that real fast. We actually budgeted $45,000 for engineer expenses for the remaining, for the year that we're in currently. However, we budgeted 2,500 for reimbursable engineer fees and to date, we've collected over actually 24,000. So we've actually under budgeted our revenues. We brought in a lot more money than we anticipated and I'm going to pass out these invoices that y'all can see where that shows the revenue that's been brought in. So this is actually a good thing. Expenditures have gone up, but we've actually increased our revenues way more than what we've had the expenditures at. And then we've had insurance deductible for 6,300 that we're putting into legal for a lawsuit. We actually just got another bill in today for I think 3,400. So we're going to have to do another budget amendment at the next meeting to cover the rest of that insurance deductible. There's also some money that we're moving around to fund some minor park projects. And all of that encompasses 35,000. The money is being taken, 26,000 is being taken from contingency and then.
Reallocated.
Reallocated. And 3,226 is being reallocated from administrator discretion to cover the issue that Barbie just mentioned. And then a greenway emergency repair that we've already approved for some drainage issues that we had.
Bob, do you have that information front of you? Do you have any questions?
Not at all. I'm looking at it. That's what it is.
Okay. Any other questions from council regarding these expenditures?
Nope.
Amy, you're good?
Nope, good.
All right. So I'd like to make.
No more movie night, hold on.
Doesn't say that.
Spring movie night.
Doesn't say that.
We, we, he's taking the money. It's not no more, just for this year. We didn't have it this year.
Oh, because we didn't have it.
That's right. Okay, that makes sense.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to approve budget ordinance OR-2020-05-02 in the amount of $35,126 to reallocate funding in park operations, general government, legal expenses and professional services.
Further discussion. All in favor? Aye.
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 Next up, consideration proclamation to honor Marvin Ridge High School graduates. Did I miss one?
Yep.
I'm sorry. Consider approval of budget ordinance number OR-2020-05-03 in amount of $16,750 to reallocate salaries for planning intern, general government intern and finance assistant.
So upon the reduction of hours in our financial officer, Chris, when she left, we kind of discussed hiring an intern to do some temporary projects for us and then we moved our assistant around to have some more hours. And so a lot of this is reflective of those changes. We're basically taking $15,000 out of the finance officer position and reallocating 7,000 of that to the finance assistant because she had an increase in expectations and thus her hours. And then the temporary intern that has been able to assist with various projects. And then also Rohit is planning on hiring an intern primarily in next fiscal year, which we budgeted for. However, there's maybe like 30 days where he's going to be working in this fiscal year. So we put in that $1,700 for that.
So this is not new money? This is just money being moved around from?
Yes, yep.
So Rohit?
Yes.
Do you have this general government intern?
Mine is the planning intern.
General government's Austin.
Oh, why did I think he was planning?
Austin. He's been, he's been helping with various projects.
All right, so who's the planning intern?
His name is Matthew Blazek. He's a junior at App State and he's studying city and regional planning at Department of Geography. We met him. He seems very, seems very competent and he got into planning because he saw his aunt doing a comprehensive plan, which is that, that's exactly what our main project is. So I'm really excited to have him on board for his summer semester.
Okay, cool. So he'll be working with you on the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
I mean, primarily or?
Primarily.
Okay.
And how many hours?
He'll be doing 400 hours, which is, you know, 10 weeks for the hour.
Cool. Very good. All right.
Questions, Bob?
Just in general, I've noticed during my tenure here that we bring interns in from wherever we do. Are these outstanding, Christina, are these folks that, young people that come in from, that are gaining experience from universities, colleges, that sort of thing to, you know, just asking?
Yes. Yep.
Like I see the one that Rohit was talking about was from Appalachian State, but I was looking at the person that was coming in to assist with finance, just asking, you know, they come in from university, we provide a service.
Finance is still there, right?
Learn a little bit.
So. Yeah, so they do, Austin, okay, so the one that Rohit is referring to is one that is actually in college right now. So he is looking to gain some experience and work on some projects. The one, the other one that we hired, Austin, he's actually a graduate student, well, he's actually a graduate graduate. I mean, he graduated with an MPA and he's actually currently looking for work now and we obviously don't have a full-time position open. So we had some temporary projects we just wanted to get done. So that's kind of what, what he was a part-time.
Is he still working?
He is.
Okay, good. And then the finance assistant is Julie.
Okay.
And we typically pay for any internships we do?
This is the first time I've seen us have them, but typically, yeah, you do see interns paid. You can see them paid or unpaid, but.
I like the fact that we can provide some for them. It sort of drives me crazy that, you know, interns that in their college years that have to do it pro bono and stuff where, you know, I mean, that's a lot of their time. It is gaining experience, but I think it's great that we can provide something in the form of a stipend or whatever it is, so.
If I can add to that, we learned that if you have an unpaid intern, their experience has to be pretty much, you know, one directional, like the job shadowing or something. But when an intern is doing something productive for the government that they work for, then you have to pay them.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to approve budget ordinance OR-2020-05-03 in the amount of $16,750 to reallocate salaries for planning intern, general government intern and finance assistant.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have consideration proclamation to honor Marvin Ridge High School graduates and direct staff to prepare. I don't know if we've prepared anything yet.
We haven't, we haven't had time.
The only thing I would like to add to this is to add the college graduates of Marvin too, not just the high school kids that didn't get recognized, but also the students that are Marvin residents of colleges that I know are around there. And I think that this is one way to, at least to our part, I know each community has done their own frames. One was tonight in Marvin, you know, Ridge, not Ridge or Marvin Creek. I hope that went well, but it's just a way to recognize. It's how, Phil, my heart goes out to, I mean, so many individuals don't get to experience that. And more importantly, a lot of them won't ever see their friends than I mean like they would in that environment again. It's just all of a sudden, it's cut off and they're on to their colleges and stuff and no time to say goodbye. So it's some way if we can just address that in a way.
You going to add middle school and elementary school in there?
Well, eighth grade, they did cancel eighth grade.
And they've canceled fifth grade graduation.
Well, I don't know. Do we do that?
Yeah, yes, they do.
I mean, do you want to put that in?
Probably just cover all of them.
Cover all of those that are graduating Marvin residents.
All graduates.
All graduates, including high school, middle school.
Okay, we can work on that.
With a little kiss.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
It is a big deal.
It is.
I know.
My heart goes out to all those individuals. So do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Or do we, we don't have it yet, so.
No, I mean, you can, you can make a motion. We can prepare it, just have you sign it whenever we want.
Okay, and then we, that'll be done. Okay, we're graduating, we're already graduating people.
We'll get it as soon as we can.
Okay, I know.
We guys are really quick with some of this stuff.
We wrapped it up and then we can send that.
I'm just curious, the week is, I may have to do an electronic signing with it because I may be away if you get it in the next week.
That's fine, that's fine.
You going to make that a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation to honor Marvin, Marvin residents who are graduating, high school, college, middle school.
Elementary.
And elementary. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for that. Next up, we have consideration of entering agreement with Central Line Council governments for an amount not to exceed $6,000 for a personal study and authorized administrator to execute contract contingent on attorney review.
Didn't we have you do this already?
No, we haven't. We haven't done it already, but I actually don't have the agreement. They didn't have it prepared yet. I don't know if y'all had a chance to read the memo that I've got listed here and I really.
Is it in here?
Yeah, for some reason this agenda is out of order.
Can you scroll back a couple of them?
I haven't seen.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we going forward back? Like, I haven't passed it yet.
No, it looks like this. Maybe it looks like this.
I want to pass it. Do we else have it? Personnel study, there it is. It's pa, it's one. It's one pass to the trail rebid.
So there's $6,000 that we have appropriated for personnel policy rewrite. And this was really to look at the legality of our policy and kind of change some of the state and federal changes that have occurred throughout the years. We've obviously got to redo our personnel policy based on the change that took place this afternoon with the change of charter. So that's something that we need to go through over the next couple of weeks, months and get that stuff done. So I'm asking to take the $6,000 that we appropriated for that personnel rewrite and.
So we have talked about it. Like we, like we, I'm like, we've had a discussion.
We talked about it at the budget retreat where we were going to come in and have someone look at our.
And didn't we talk about it at the retreat retreat?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we've talked about this, okay.
So I'm just asking you guys to allow me to proceed with that contract and I wish I had it here in front of me, but I don't. So again, the scope of service for the contract is going to be to look at the number of employees that we have, the current workloads, the job duties, the descriptions, the salaries and compare those to like municipalities with the same services and populations. And COG had mentioned that they do these types of retreats at the, I'm sorry, they do these types of studies at the retreats. And uh, I'm asking to enter a contract with them not to exceed six thousand dollars.
And then it addresses what specifically?
Job duties.
Current workloads, job duties, job descriptions. And the main thing is to look at and see if we're adequately staffed with the level of work that we're doing.
Now, um, Christina, what, what is highlighted in yellow, is that been a change or something? Is that a reason why that's there?
No, 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 that's just basically me telling you guys that as a part of your procurement policy, I am dubbing this uh, contract as what's called professional services. And therefore, we, we don't have to go out through the bidding process. You, you, within the threshold of this, this contract amount, you would typically have to go out to bid or to, to quote, three different quotes. And according to what I've interpreted as a professional service, this is where I would say this, it's not a requirement to do that.
Okay.
And so I guess I'm um, asking you consider allowing me to enter this agreement. I know you don't have it in front of you, but um, those are the scope of service of what's gonna be allowed in that contract. And so allow me to execute that contract based on the amount that's listed.
And we're relying on you to keep her in check.
Right.
The attorney, right.
I was gonna say, I'm fine with it as long as Chaplain reviews it. Okay. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Central United, or to enter into the agreement with Central United Council of Governments for an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars for personnel study. And authorize the village manager to execute contract contingent upon attorney review.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, discussion consideration of appointment for baked in council seat. Barbie?
Barbie. Okay, um, actually, um, you have in your packet one, and then I've received two others that um, the packet had already gone out. So I, I included the two applic, um, applications in the packet that I delivered to your home yesterday. Um, so, and that was on Christopher Smith and Mike Givoy, including the one with um, Andy Wardman.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a shut-off time on when we're accepting or?
Um, the shut-off time was yesterday. And um, based on, based on timing, you, you can also extend the time to ha, to get more applications if you want to. Uh, the recommended time may be uh, May twenty-fifth if you wanna look at them at your work session. That gives you a little bit of time to, for me to get them in the packet and you have some time to review and.
Um, my, I mean, my feeling is, yes, let's extend it a little bit, but maybe not that far out. And what I'd like to do is um, because since we've got a work session on the twenty-eighth, why don't we try to do like a special meeting like, from like, that afternoon kind of going into the evening with the applicants?
And just have separate times for each applicant to come in and interview?
Yeah.
Special meeting before the, the work session?
No, no, after, because we have a work session that day and there's always been a long.
We're already there.
We're kind of already there, so we kind of, you know, just kind of, we'll take a little bit of a break, but then we move into interviews? I go with you?
Sounds good to me.
Bob?
Well, Ken, are, are you sound just hearing what you're saying? Do, do we all interview applicant, the three of us? Or in this case, Joe maybe, cause now he can vote. Do, do all four of us interview or do we separately?
I, I, I think for, in my opinion, the four of us need to do it because it's for council. Like if it was for a board appointment, I think we could talk to people individually. But I think if we're going to be putting someone on council with us, um, in an appointment uh, position, then I think we should do it together.
Well, I would agree because then, you know, cause I thought, okay, then if I interview one, two and three and everybody's doing one, two and three, then all of us gotta get together.
Right, so we just do it together.
Yeah, it, it makes it more streamlined, okay?
Yeah, and it's, it's a good chance for us to get.
We'll go over there again.
Our questions organized and, and, and maybe um, we can put on the agenda for the work session. You know, some questions or have some questions ready for, for that, or come prepared with questions that we can talk about. So maybe a holding spot on that work session. To, um. Set aside some time on the twenty-eighth to, you know, why assume we all come with our own personal questions that we have or concerns or whatever it is? And then we get that all together and just kind of formulate where the same questions are asked to the same individuals.
Yeah, I've seen that.
And then their next meeting is on the night that they can make a decision. Okay, um, okay, are you, you're okay with the twenty-fifth? To extend the applications to the twenty-fifth or you wanna do it?
I was thinking like the twenty, I was thinking like the twenty-second. And the reason.
Or we can.
It's just a deadline.
Just, okay.
It's just a deadline. It's just a deadline, and in this way, we can tell them whoever puts in their application that we're gonna do interviews on the afternoon and evening of the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Instead of like getting applications in the twenty-fifth or, well, not the twenty-fifth because that's Memorial Day, but the twenty-sixth. And then it's like, oh, we want to interview you in two days. Like this gives people enough notice.
Okay, so, so what time do you want to try and do the interviews? Because that'll have to be a separate notice for the eight-hour notice.
I mean, is it what, nine o'clock?
It's all nine o'clock.
Mm-hmm.
It'll probably go.
Till two?
Stop it, um, a couple of hours.
That's how long, that's how long the last two work sessions have gone?
I, it's been a lot.
So do you wanna do them after, directly after your work session?
I was thinking maybe start at like four, give us a little bit of a break. So do like four to five, five to six, six to seven, seven to eight, depending on how many we get. Like right now, we've got four, so I would go ahead and, or three, so I'd go ahead and start scheduling them at four. And then just say we have a special meeting at four o'clock and then it's open ahead, cause we can do that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And then I would just budget an hour per applicant. Or fifty minutes per applicant. And then is that, is that considered closed session? Like a?
No, it's open because it's.
So, so how do we, do we deliberate in open session or do we go into closed session to deliberate? Cause it's not like personnel, so how does that work?
Yeah, no, you cannot go in closed session to discuss the qualifications of your um, prospective appointees.
Okay.
So you deliberate.
In open session.
Or if you're not gonna make a decision, you, we planning on making a decision after that, those interviews, is that the?
I mean, I think you should.
I know, or we could wait.
We could wait to the next meeting.
We have an opportunity to talk individually.
That's what I have in my letter to.
I can talk to him about what he thought and I can talk to her separately about what she thought. I mean, that's how decisions are made.
So then, so then we'll make the, we'll make the decision and the subsequent appointment at?
The meeting.
So then everybody has to show up and it's like, ooh, did I get it? Or we tell the person?
Well, I mean, they can choose to, I mean, I don't know, we can uh, we call it a special meeting if you wanted to. To, to, to announce who we're gonna.
Announce and appoint and then start on the night.
Yeah, and then let them know that they, you know, I think that's fair. We could, I don't think would take too long to do. Um, it's just a matter of coordinating everyone being here.
Okay, so, so I'm hearing that um, to um, to extend it till the twenty-second, so I'll communicate that out. And that to um, you will hold a special meeting on the twenty-eighth, starting at four. If we have only the three that we have currently, then that will be uh, interviews at four, five and six. Um, and then um, after that, you'll schedule another sp, uh, special meeting to appoint from that, yeah, selection of candidates.
That twenty-eighth is on a Thursday, so kind of get, for council, I'm saying, get your mind wrapped around when would be a good time for a special meeting. Cause she needs, what, seven days?
We could recess at special meeting.
They recess that meeting on the twenty-eighth?
As long as y'all know when you're gonna, we're gonna decide then.
Yeah, we'll recess.
Yeah.
This way, we can do it the following morning, it'd be great.
Yeah, so you could do, you could do, do it Friday morning and say, um, let's recess until nine o'clock on.
That's perfect.
The, the twenty-ninth and to, to appoint our candidate.
Yep.
Or if you have your decision, you can appoint that night or.
And then that way I won't have to put that in there. And you won't have to wait forty-eight hours for me to do that.
Okay, cool beans. And so we'll go over these applications and be ready um, for those interviews on the twenty-eighth.
Yep. So I'll, I'll go ahead and get out on the website and on mail chip and next door that we've extended the application uh, deadline till the twenty-second.
And then announcing when the interviews are gonna take place and everyone will know right away. Everyone's gonna get an interview.
Um, do you want me to do it at the closing business on Friday? So technically, we're closed on Friday. So do you want me to do it at the closing, closing business day or will twelve noon be okay for the deadline time?
If we're extending it, I think twelve noon is fine.
Me too.
No sense in you having last minute to do something. Um, so no action needs to be taken on that, right?
Nope, no.
All right.
Hold on, Bob, you good with that?
I have just, just a quick recap, deadline's gonna be on the twenty-second, gonna be interviewing on the twenty-eighth. What time are we gonna start on the twenty-eighth?
Four.
Thank you.
And then we're basically gonna um, what do you call it?
Recess.
Recess the meeting to most likely the following day if we can't make a decision at that time. The next, the next morning, recess the meeting to the next morning. This way, we don't have to call a special meeting. We can reconvene and then public announce to maybe delivering and announce who we are going to um, appoint.
Thanks.
So leave that open in your calendar if you will. I gotta block that whole day off, okay. Any other questions, concerns? All right, moving forward, discussion consideration of Talmore Phase Two.
Derek, um, I'll call him.
I, I got him, he's right here. You're up Derek.
Okay, how's everyone?
Good, how are you?
Bob, hearing?
Good.
Bob, can you hear Derek?
Sorry, say it again.
Say it like crazy, keep talking Derek, I'll let you know.
Go ahead Derek, you can just keep talking.
Okay, so you guys have the information in your packets, uh, the memo that I typed up. Um, just a quick summary. We have been dealing with uh, wet conditions in that area uh, for some time. Part of the delay in the project was to move the trail to a, to higher ground to try to deal with some of those wet issues. Um, but even so, uh, the trail builder is still um, combating wet issues specifically in the area behind one of the retention ponds. And just where it reaches into the ground. And so as you see in the memo I typed, um, he came back and told us after reassessing the site that uh, he's gonna need a lot more material. And um, both in the aggregate that will go on the trail and some railroad ties and pipes to kind of meander the trail, raise it up in different spots. And um, do everything he can to keep the water off of it when it does rain. Um, and so of course, that's gonna cost more money for him to do that. So I put forth a, my suggestion of uh, what action you guys should take.
Real fast, just Derek, let me interrupt you for one second. The stuff that was just passed out is for the next agenda item, it's not for this one. So don't look at what was passed out. I'm sorry Derek.
That's fine, yeah, we're on Talmore Phase Two.
So Derek, I know that we had to get three bids for this and, you know, Blue Ridge did, you know, he's not the lowest bidder. Um, but the person that had done, you know, the work in phase one. How the other two bidders, are they gonna come back with raised bids as well? Like is this something that they're? That has to be done in order, like?
It, it, it just looks like if that's what they're saying, that they, they win the bid, we approve the bid. And then all of a sudden they say, eh, you know, I think we gotta do this and this and this. We, we're talking that much money, we gotta go back out the bid.
That's, that's, that's.
I mean, that's, that's the smart prudent thing to do from, we're spending government taxpayer dollars and all of a sudden. And I like these guys, I think they do a good job, but I think it's gotta be, whatever they laid out, we use that and say, this is now the new bid we have because.
And, and, and if the other bids come back at, you know, the higher price and, you know, okay, I get it, got it. But I, I mean, I, I think this is, that's a lot more money and a, a, a big difference that I'm, I'm not comfortable.
Twice as much.
Yeah, I'm just not comfortable.
It's just tough.
Without going back out to bid to see what the other people have to say.
Right, would you like, like me to bring in additional quotes as well?
I mean, I mean, you can put it back out to bids as a three, but if you think there's more than three that are out there that can do this, then, I mean, sure.
Cause I'm sure we've announced publicly that we were gonna award that bid, but then they came back and said, no, we really need to do this. Well, if that's the case and you've just doubled the price, it's gotta go back. In fairness, they gotta understand that we can't just accept that, we have to.
I mean, a cup, you know, a couple hundred dollar, you know, is.
Even a thousand dollars, I would be okay with, I think. But this is almost the same price as the full bid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was my, 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 my notes here was eleven thousand or total, whereas the eleven thousand dollars more, and it sounds like it's eleven thousand dollars more.
It is eleven thousand dollars more. Yeah, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I, so I, I think we're, I make a motion to put that back out to bid.
And nullify the, the.
Yeah.
And reject.
And reject the previous award.
And, and the good news is hopefully you have some sort of diagram maybe or what they're saying, so we can get apples to apples for the other people who are bidding on it.
Yeah, was his more, you know, most recent detailed assessment of the issues, you know, he, he thinks he's gonna face. I'll definitely be able to bring that um, to the other bidders and possibly more to get their opinions on it as well.
Yeah, I, I think that would be good.
And again, we didn't necessarily go with the lowest bidder, but we went with a bidder who we knew did really good work and they were very close.
Yeah.
Right, I, I know they'll understand, so.
Yeah, okay.
We'll get it done the right way.
All right, thank you. There's a motion on the table, further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye. I'm, I'm fine with it, aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Motion passes, next up, uh, discussion consideration of park trail rebuild project.
That's one, I think, that's, this is the new.
So this was a capital improvement project that was put out to bid it twice. We extended it one time and we have two bidders um, come back as you can see. And um, Nature Trail, Nature Trails LLC um, came back as the lowest bidder. I've looked at some of their work, they, they do good work. They have um, good recommendations, letters of recommendations. So you can see my, my suggested motion is to, to go with them for the award of the contract to rebuild the park trail. To bring it up to meet our standards and ordinances.
Derek, did you happen to go back to Blue Ridge Trail and say, hey, this is, this is what we got from this other guy, can you guys meet it?
Uh, no, not yet.
I mean, I was wondering, I mean, I know we like what Blue Ridge Trails Works does. I'm just wondering, like, since we, since, you know, they're a known commodity. Do you wanna do that or do you feel really good about Nature Trails? Cause we can do that, can't we?
They're the lowest, you know.
Really?
Lowest responsive, you're not really, yeah.
Nature Trails is.
I thought when we were talking about town hall, then we could go back and see if somebody would.
That is.
Different?
Yeah, and you can also, you have different types of bids depending on if you're going for pricing or.
All right, never mind then.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought we did that one, we were talking about that one.
We did, but there's a little bit, there's a dollar threshold.
Yeah, and that one, they were already the, they were already the lowest responsive and been chosen. We're trying to get them to cut some more in that one.
Gotcha, oh, okay.
Derek and I did have this conversation today though.
I was gonna say, I wasn't totally out of luck.
No.
In any case, are we required to take the lowest bidder?
Lowest responsive bidder, and then you can, you can take some other factors, but in general, you are, but they have to be the lowest responsive bidder taking in uh, cumulative factors.
All right, and they came in under the amount that we had put towards it. Right?
We, we haven't um, budgeted anything, but it's been discussed with the CFP.
Fee and loo, right?
Yeah, the CFP.
Yeah. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to award the contract to the lowest responsive bidder for the rebuild, construction of the park trail and authorize. and authorize the village manager to execute the contract between the Village of Marvin and the Trails Builder.
Wait, is it, didn't it Nature Trails LLC?
It says the Trail Builder.
He just said Trail. Because he didn't know which one they were going to award.
I gotcha.
And Nature Trails LLC.
I'm sorry.
Further discussion, real quick, when did they, would they get started?
Tomorrow.
I would, uh. Give me a timeline of three weeks.
Started within three weeks?
No, that he would be finished with the project within three weeks.
Awesome.
When can he start?
Oh, man, is it in that package? I don't see.
Nothing is scum.
Uh, it says pending date of award notice. Nature Trails projects mobilization to occur on June 2020 with an approximate project duration of three weeks pending our weather.
So, so how many June, be done by, by the end of the month? Okay.
Okay, so any other discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you guys.
Thanks Derek.
Derek?
Yep.
Just a quick question, I happened to go by because I got a picture of the pavilion.
Do you have the state, Nick?
Yeah.
The park?
Looks pretty good, but I, I went over there to actually look at it and then everything was locked up, so. Number one, is it finished? And number two, when, when do we have any plans for the park opening back?
Don't you go by?
I went by a week ago or something.
It just opened.
Oh, it just opened?
On Fri, Saturday.
Good, I wanna come by and take a look at it tomorrow then.
But it's, yeah, it's only open limited times.
I'm sorry?
It's only open limited times, like nine to five or something.
That's.
Next morning, modified hours of the park.
Okay, good, good. Glad you're back open.
Yeah, you too.
I'm sure all the dog owners are too. Thank you for all that.
Absolutely, thank y'all.
Okay, good night. Um, next up, discussion and consideration of Marvin Gardens Commercial Out Parcel Subdivision flat.
I hope you have this in front of you because normally I would put this up on Steve.
Is Steve just sitting out there by itself?
It is, but it's camouflaging right now, it's a little fine.
It's not getting wet, right?
No, no, totally drunk. So Marvin Gardens has a parcel that they call Parcel Two. In some documents, they call it Envelope B, which was, which is going to be the four out parcel tents. It's on the intersection corner right now. And this is simply a subdivision plat of one parcel into four parcels as it is allowed in the original zoning document. So in front of you, there is the subdivision proposal and then there is the original zoning document. Do you guys have that?
Oh my god.
It's, this one's really simple, actually. All you have to know is that in the original zoning document, there is an exact, you know, subdivision allowed with, you know, the four out parcels and the subdivision that they are now actually proposing, yes, those. Those four parcels.
Okay.
That is what is allowed in the zoning district and that is exactly what they are applying for.
Okay, okay. And that's what, that's what's allowed?
That's what, one, yeah, one of the documents, it has Regency Centers on it, that's the original zoning document.
But they wanted to take Parcel Two and subdivide it?
No, 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 no. The whole thing was Parcel Two out of like one, two, three, four, five. And so they're taking Parcel Two and subdividing into one, two, three, four.
Okay, that makes sense, that makes sense. So it's not changing anything because we always talked about what might be placed there is more of a attraction, whether it's a restaurant or something like that, right on that corner. But that was gonna be subdivided smaller.
No, 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 that's not, that's not what's being, no, that's not what I meant. And so you can compare it yourself, you can see the original zoning document, you can compare it with the subdivision application, they're exactly the same.
What's, is this the original one?
That is the original one, yes.
It looks the same.
It is the same.
It, it is, and y'all's UDO, I think, as y'all are approving subdivision flats and that's kind of a, a lot of councils wanted to know everything that was going on, but it's.
Well, what's the difference between this and this?
There is no difference, but that is what we allow them to do and the subdivision proposal is them actually doing it.
There's not much discretion on this one for y'all in, in all of it.
Okay.
Honesty, and as we move forward with some of these subdivision flats and we were about to do the UDO, we're probably gonna have statutory subdivisions that are allowed, approved on a staff level. That's how it is in most of the, almost all of UC.
Do we need to do anything?
You have to approve the subdivision.
Okay.
And, yeah.
We have to approve something that hasn't changed, that they've already applied for, that we've already said is okay?
Well, as, yeah, as Kaplan said, normally, uh.
No, I'm just checking, I'm just making sure I'm on board.
That's the way you said it.
Yeah, and normally a municipality staff does this, but our.
Okay.
Yes.
Describe that.
Alright, great, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the Marvin Gardens Commercial Out Parcel Subdivision plat.
Further discussion? Thanks for giving us a heads up. I don't have any choice over really.
Got it.
I know.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Um, next up, discussion of Land Use Plan and Comprehensive Plan Timeline.
Yay!
Great, so Planning Board's been working on the Land Use Plan for a very long time and they're excited to say that they're going to be wrapping up the, the text part of it in their next meeting next week. The text is chapters one through five and, you know, it contains the, this is Marvin, this is what we want to be, and then chapter five is like the specifics of how we accomplish that. We still have to work on the pictures and maps and I wanna get nineteen, 2019's survey data, so what we've, John and I have discussed is if we can send council the bulk of, you know, the text of the Land Use Plan now and then in the next two months or so, they can work on the Comprehensive Plan, which in your timeline it also shows COG is doing a regional growth model, which our Comprehensive Plan is going to be drawing a lot from. I figured that would be a good opportunity for us to consolidate efforts. So I've been working with them on that and then when they're done with that, I will borrow the results for the Marvin area. And then in the July timeframe, the Comprehensive Plan and Land Use Plan together will be in a position that we can review it. So the reason why the timeline is coming up to council is because Planning Board and also Barbie and I were all discussing saying, we should probably ask you if that's a good time for you guys to start reviewing the Comprehensive Plan and it's now also the time to start reviewing the Land Use Plan types.
I made notes myself, how many pages is this, do we know?
Um, the whole thing is fifty-two pages, but the, the text part that would be ready to be submitted is around thirty-eight, forty pages, something like that.
And that's what I, I was gonna suggest, because I wrote that as I was reviewing this, that we at least get maybe anything that's been approved or been looked at and sort of vetted on, on the Planning Board's part that we can start getting a jump on it.
Yeah.
For late night reading.
And can you give us a deadline when you want us to have it all perused and digested by?
Actually, I don't think we talked, I think, I think we were kinda leaning towards letting you guys set the deadline. Next week? Well, yes, sure, so the, the Planning Board still has to finalize chapters one through five.
I'm kidding, really? I would say get us the information, like as soon as they're ready, like as soon as it's ready, like chapters one through five.
Sure.
If that's approved next week.
Then I can get it.
Then go ahead and send it to us and then that will be.
Our homework.
I would say let's have that for us to be done by the June work session. Is that, is that too, is that too long?
No, that's, that's perfectly fine, because again, we have to go back and do the comp plan and then send the whole package with maps and the pictures.
I mean, this way we're at least looking at the text and we'll have that done.
Yeah, the text is actually the vast majority of the Land Use.
So it's like six weeks? Well, it'll be five weeks after next week, so is that, is that?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Is it fair to say get what you can approved and move it all to, as soon, sooner the better? And it will commit to you as a council, but we'll have it read and reviewed by.
Marked out by the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth of June.
Is that good?
Yeah, that, that fits very well.
Bob, you okay with that?
Oh, absolutely. I, I will add that John and the Planning Board, because I'm the one that's on and I sit on it and I watch what they're doing. They've been working pretty tediously at each of the, you know, at almost every sentence. If, if I speak it, um, so, you know, I, I feel fortunate. I had sitting on that position, have a little bit of a jump on it because I'm able to read it. So, um, anyway, um, yeah, I'm all good with it.
Terrific, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Alright, do we need to make, take an action?
Uh, no, this is for your consensus.
Thank you. We're all good, council?
Good, yeah.
Alright. Next up, we have discussion consideration resolution number RS-2020-05-04 to support the Union County Build Grant application for stormwater study.
Okay, so Union County and part Lancaster County are going to apply for a federal grant which is going to study the effects of transportation and development on stormwater. And they wanted, the application's actually due next week and so they wanted to, to ask all the municipalities in Union County, one, you know, to give a letter of support and, you know, two, the federal grant requires a certain percentage of the match, twenty percent, and the Union County's paying half of that twenty percent. The municipalities would split that last ten percent, leaving us with a proportional thirty-five hundred out of the total of a million dollar project. This thirty-five hundred is going to be requested, not next year of course, because the budget was approved late, a couple hours ago, it would be a little bit late, but the following fiscal year at least, or maybe even the following fiscal year after that, depending on the project's timeline if they win the grant. So Bjorn Hansen, who is the Long Range Planner of the County, has asked all of the municipalities to prepare a resolution of support and given a template, basically, to say that municipalities support Union County in applying for this grant and if the county wins, that we will be able to pledge a proportion of ours, which is thirty-five hundred in a, you know, a near future fiscal year.
And that thirty-five hundred dollars. Direct to what exactly?
It's our proportion of the local match. Local match in total is about two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, and how do we benefit in this? Is this just for, on new developments that are coming in for stormwater, or is it?
This, this can be both used to guide new developments and also retrofit old developments. For example, the county identifies Joe Carr at the Marvin Branch Creek as one of the locations that could use an improved culvert design. That's, that's the type of thing that would come out of this grant.
Who's gonna pay for that?
Well, that's a state road, so that would be, isn't it? It's not a valley road.
It's, yes, it's a state road.
So, and it goes over, and I note the issue, anytime it rains heavily, you get, that floods out and stuff, so they can certainly improve that, but I'm just trying to think.
But I mean, would it be the, would it be NC D O G that pays for that fancy new culvert or whatever it requires?
They would probably have cost sharing between.
So the answer is we don't know?
Yeah, I guess we don't know.
So let's find out what that answer is. Let's also find out who else is ponying up for this, do we know that answer?
Um, we do.
Who else has said yes?
Ten of the fourteen municipalities are participating.
Are the other fourteen said, or other four said no, or they've not responded yet?
Um, I think they just aren't participating.
Do we know who they are?
Um, yeah, I can search that in my email.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to know, like, if they're improving the stormwater flow and transportation designs, who is paying for the fixes of that? Or is it just a study and they're gonna be like, well, here's what would make it better, you guys figure it out?
Yeah, I don't, let me, let me see if I can find answers to that. The, the grants, the grant though, the application is due next Monday, so we don't really have time to come back to this. Let me see if I can figure out the answer to your questions right now.
And I don't know who collects the stormwater fees, if the county does that for all of them, but there are stormwater fees paid a lot and then you pick projects based upon your, the severity. So there may be a, I just don't know.
We don't have stormwater program and.
It's Union County only voting on it, right? It's just really the commissioners.
Yeah.
The commissioners are deciding that.
And it may be something that's communicated to DEQ, you know, I don't, I don't know.
Or maybe try to get another grant.
For the implementation.
Alright, so I have a list of the, the governments who did contribute. Lancaster County's contributing forty thousand, Fairview's four thousand, Indian Trail twenty-five thousand, Lake Park fifteen hundred, Marvin thirty-five hundred, Middle Springs four thousand, Stallings eight thousand, Weddington nine thousand, Westlake Chapel six thousand and Wingate two thousand, Union County ninety-six thousand.
That's all proposed, it's not yet decided.
Yeah, those are all, those are all our cost shares.
So you, you don't know for sure who's participating and who's not?
Yeah, I did, I did attend a meeting this morning that he had on it and many of them said, oh, we've already got our councils to approve it and then some of them said, oh, we're gonna do it tonight, stuff like that. I didn't see anyone that said our council did not approve it.
So when did this come out?
This came out last week, this was.
I expect it to respond so quick without.
Yeah, it was, it was kind of last minute. I think the issue came up that the previous county commission meeting got canceled due to a lack of form. So they had to, to apply for this grant, they had to get it. And the May fourth commission meeting, you know, they approved the, the budget then and then the next day he sends out to all the municipalities saying, can you try and get this on your next staff meeting because the due date for this application is.
So this grant, we're not assured we're gonna get it, right?
Right, it's an application for a grant.
So if we do get it, we're on the hook for thirty-five hundred.
Yes, in a.
If we don't get it, we don't have, we're not.
We don't have any, yes, we don't have any.
And it benefits us?
It benefits us because we much like Union County, the rest of Union County are affected by flooding, mostly due to development and some transportation infrastructure. And we could benefit from improved transportation and development designs that would come out of this stormwater study.
So for new stuff, but how do we retrofit stuff? Who's paying for that?
If you own the roads, you're paying for it.
So then that'll never get fixed because D O G's broke, so.
Right. I don't understand, but then the, what's the, what's the adverse to it? So if you go, you know what, we're, we're out. Can they come back and say, oh, we, we would have helped you, but you didn't?
Right, that's, that's what I, that's, if they're willing.
We can engineer to figure that out anyways, right, when it comes to developments?
I get it, but I mean, there's going to be someone to say, well, gee, you had an opportunity. And I'm just, I'm just playing devil's out, because I'm just trying to, you know, what's the responsive, what's the responsive no? We obviously know the responsive yes.
I just wanna know what I'm signing up for.
Right. I just think it's.
But we don't know what the responsive yes is, because are they gonna fix the problem?
Right, and who's on the hook for it? And how much is the cost and you just looking for?
Like, I mean, I need more information to make a decision, like I can't just be like, oh, yeah, that looks good.
And I can't, I can't, and I can't believe that they're, they're giving you a week to, to get a response.
And that's just, yeah, it's just that, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot more questions right now than, it's just like, you know. I mean, to, to expect that is almost, but I know the deadline is, who's pushing the deadline?
The federal grants, that's.
It's a federal grant. The federal grant's gonna give a grant for how much?
It's, uh, the grant's total, I mean, the project total is one million, but the local. It's, uh, the grant's total, the, I mean, the project total is one million, but the local match is twenty percent of that, so the federal, federal will give eight hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand.
And that's just to study it?
Yes, all the, the whole one million is just to study.
And then they share that information with our, um, A M T, the, um, engineers?
Yeah. Yeah, it looks like the last item is to prepare our court recommendations, the whole thing is to study.
So basically, the way I look at it is, there's a grant out there, and if we happen to get it, we're basically saying, hey, part of that grant is a matching, and we're doing our part, Marvin, they look at it as a thirty-five hundred dollar commitment for a study that hopefully can help us on future planning and old existing, where that information goes, what they, whatever they study is not too clear on. So that kind of makes sense, bigger towns, bigger areas, lot more roads and square footage, mileage, whatever it is, they're gonna require more, like Weddington, I think you said was nine thousand?
Yeah, Weddington's nine thousand.
So, so Chaplain, would the commitment be, it's a grant, you've been, you've been presented the grant, okay, you, you want it?
You got it.
Do you, are you committed, you obligated to, to award it, are you obligated?
If the grant is awarded, you are obligated with the local match, if you sign the resolution.
So what happens if some of these other towns say no, and they don't get their two hundred thousand dollars?
Then they're less likely to get the federal grant, and you won't have the studies done in this area, and you're probably gonna end up with a little bit more stormwater in the future. You won't have a million dollars of studies, they'll send it to some other region where they have more.
So we'll have the studies, but we have no way to fix the problems, or?
It's just information, which could be.
Which could be helpful.
It's more, probably more perspective.
It's almost like it's shared, we're, we're a big county, and we're sharing the costs through all these little municipalities, again, the ones that advantages, the, the donut holes that, you know, we're paying for, you know, stuff that helps them, and they're getting representation.
Oh, we should add that to the list of why you shouldn't go to Marvin.
Yeah, it's probably more perspective, so you'd have more information with new development, because this is gonna be hard, you'll find some problems, but you're right, you gotta find money here.
All right, so, I'd like to jump in, so I, I'm, I'm, let me get this, does it give us any strength, uh, you know, like, I know, for example, uh, you know, from PowerPoint, if looking around, there is a lot of flooding that's been going on, even since, uh, I moved in, in this area in two thousand thirteen. So I see we have a problem, does this then give incidence to whoever it would be, whether it be the state, I'm gonna say state, whether they have money or not, does it, doesn't put them in a position, does it have power to them to say, you need to correct this?
Did you hear that?
Might be the problem.
Does it put them in a position that, what are you asking again, one more time, does it put the state?
I was looking, like, would be the study, in other words, the grant, identifies we have issues, okay, we have, I have issues in Marvin, so does it give weight to the fact that there's a problem? You know, we're talking about, okay, next step, who's gonna fix it, does it, you know, put some sort of a light on us, that it, it, there are problems that need to be fixed? In other words, is it, whether you have money or not from the state, is, is a problem?
So, the PowerPoint there, the application seems to identify that there are problems, and also specific locations of these problems, but it doesn't seem to identify who then would fix the problem and with what funding mechanism.
Okay, okay, I just want to make that quick, because I know I'm, I'm hearing from everybody that fixes this, and like, that's what I'm asking, does it make you give weight to the fact that it's the U S Department of Transportation? That it says, hey, the state of North Carolina, you gotta fix these culverts and, and areas that are, that are, that are affected, you know, that's what I asked.
I just want to say, yeah, yeah, well, I'd agree to it as if everyone else agrees, so, but my question is, why are municipalities not agreeing to it? And how does that affect the overall grant, if you just said four people were definitely out?
Between, uh, see, between Christine and I, we talked about it, and Bjorn asked it like, a few weeks ago, you know, which municipalities would be down to do this, and then I, and then Christine and I said, we said, we can sign up, but we don't know if we can give the funding until we talk to council. So I think maybe some municipalities might have said, oh, we're probably not gonna get the money, so we won't even tell them that we will try.
Because if you don't have full participation, then it's less, the less participation you have, you're not gonna get.
You're not gonna get it.
Right.
And you already have four fairly large, I think, communities, are they not?
It would be.
I think that was higher than us. They were.
Yeah, maybe they have more.
But those are the proposed, those aren't the ones who have committed.
Right, but that's how much, uh, county is asking them to commit.
Right, but we don't know who's committed and who hasn't.
Yeah, I don't know that.
We can always try to go back and get some more information.
Well, could we, could we write something into it, because this is, I assume, like, we're signing an agreement, you know, we're in if you can get eighty percent of the communities to.
Oh, it's like, they just want us to sign a resolution, right?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
But the res- the resolution also pledges the amount.
I just, I just feel like I need more information.
I don't, I don't feel comfortable pledging an amount and, and for something, I have way too many open-ended questions, I mean.
And it's way too quick for them, I mean, this is something you think of, should be thinking about a year ahead, or six months ahead, you know there's a grant, is this a new grant or something from the government?
Uh, the bill's grant replaces the Tiger Grant, which was a longstanding application for transportation improvement.
But they must have known that this grant, that this new grant is, was being replaced, and yes, I know we have COVID and all that stuff, but giving you more of a heads up, wouldn't that make, I mean, wouldn't that be more realistic? If, if, they know the grant's there, whether it was replaced or not, they've known it's been there for years, shouldn't they have been working, knowing that it was gonna get replaced, six months ago, four months ago, three months ago, to basically give us some time to at least vet it?
Yes.
Does that make sense? Am I, am I crazy?
I just, I mean, I can't, I can't get behind that, right now, with all the open-ended questions, if you can get some more information and we can.
I don't want to be doing that, I did ask you.
I would just, I would just say, um, request, request further, request additional time, and if that attention to time is not granted, we're not in. Because I don't want, I don't want to commit to or obligate ourselves for something, we don't have, I, I think it's foolish of us to commit to something we don't have, we don't have clarity on.
In such a short timeframe, it's, it's, I don't think we have a problem participating, I just think, number one, they have to understand, if there is a known grant out there, coming to us a week before and having us make this decision and dropping us on this, I mean, we didn't even get an email about this, even, I mean, we had it for what, four days, we got the packets and stuff?
Yeah.
And that's kind of, and if they don't understand that, then I don't know how, is we go, and I, I know Bjorn very well and stuff, I, I just.
I think asking for addition, for, for an additional stay on, before making the decision is not, is, is not asking too much, I think, I think that's a very reasonable request, and I'm, and listen, I'm, I have to assume, you've got a lot of people on this, they're asking the same questions as Bjorn, and they're, and they're just, and that's probably why they're, they're going and saying, we're opting out, we're not getting answers.
And, and, and to that point is, when is the grant actually gonna be awarded?
They don't have answers right now.
So, here's the thing, that becomes, okay, if the grant's awarded, then that may give us more time to say, you know, to get, get on board, like, maybe next meeting? Um, say the grant's awarded in July or August, I don't know, I have no idea, if it's next week or whatever, I don't know, but their demand is next Monday, right?
Yeah.
It's due on the nineteenth.
Well, that's, that's the counties, they gotta get all their information by the nineteenth, but the actual grant, you know, what we can say is, look, we want to put this on pause, and if it's, if we vet this a little bit more, and you end up getting it based on, you know, uh, us, us pretending, we revisit it, but I.
Well, definitely revisit it, but I need a lot more information, so.
It's, I mean, it's fair to say that if you don't want to pledge this now, they will still apply for the grant.
Well, then if we can gather more information and we can pony up later on, then I'm sure they're not gonna turn down our thirty-five hundred dollars.
And that's where I was getting it, and that's where I was getting it, but if we can pony up later on, because the grant may be awarded in six months by that, that they got the grant, we're like, yeah, we'll help you participate, and that can only help them.
Yeah, they're not gonna turn away thirty-five hundred dollars.
Can't hurt, they're not gonna turn it down.
Okay, so Rohit, you got some research to do?
Yeah, we gotta talk to Bjorn about this.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you, uh, next up, open topics, anybody have anything last minute? All right.
I, I do, um, do we have a definitive, um, timeline on this roundabout in Newtown Road in Marvin?
No.
Do you know what's happening with this?
No. It's been postponed until they decide to start doing it again.
But we got the check.
We got the money, we got our money back, so we at least earned an interest on that.
Yeah, big interest.
It's a lot of money. Or we not now?
I know, but there's, no one's paying any interest on anything right now, um, all right, anything else?
That's true.
Not for me, no.
All right, moving on, agenda is review of action items.
Can we label that? It's late.
Oh, do you want to just? Find that?
For table?
Action items, is there a lot?
No, this action item rest.
Oh, 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 I thought, I'm sorry.
Actually, what you can do is, what I did is, I revamped the, what, what you saw previous meeting, and put it on the days that you actually put those actions into place. If you want to look at them, if there's any changes or any additions that you want to do, if you want to send me those by email, I'll update the list, and that way you won't have to, well, go through.
Perfect.
Listen, this is something we put together recently, and I'm getting agreed to later, to her point, but, but all I'm saying is, if we can move this to the twenty-eighth and just, you know, hey, we know where we're at, if you have any questions, council?
You'll see it on the twenty-eighth as well, I mean, because you'll have these.
Right, if you have any questions in the meantime, reach out to, like, I made a note that I'd like to attend one of the, uh, with the Weddington Church, I'd like to attend that meeting that they're gonna have with, whoever's doing it, happens in May. Um, but little things like that, just get out, council, make sure you review this, and, um, and then expect to look at it again on the twenty-eighth, is that good?
Is that okay?
Yeah, you'll see it again on the twenty-eighth.
See it every meeting.
Okay, all right, next up, council comments.
Oh, no, sorry, so Barbie does need to go over her action items for that.
Oh, yeah.
You want to go as a mark?
Yes, and that's what I was thinking we were at, not that, like, what.
Well, you do, it's, it's a twofold, it's, it's a twofor, it's a twofor.
It's twofor, I love it.
Um, okay, so what I heard was update on staff positions, I'm not sure exactly who's gonna do that, I guess, I guess C A is gonna do that. Uh, B B will add the public, uh, comment emails in the minutes, B B will add P R G master plan to the May twenty-eighth agenda, C A will chart the cost of the new village hall for discussion at council's work session on the twenty-eighth. B B will add discussion, emotion process, and get memo from Chaplain on the process. Um, C A, uh, B B will get, uh, update all records, um, indicating, uh, C A's new position change to a manager. Um, uh, C A and Chaplain will review, um, out of district calls. Um, B B will research wind stream or, um, cellular, cellular plan, um, I guess this is, uh, I've got a communication policy, May twenty-eighth, but I don't know who's responsible for that, I guess that would be me and you, all right, so C A and B A will do that. Um, and then B B will, um, get the coffee with council on the May twenty-eighth to start looking at, uh, dates in June, and then Rohit will get more information on the bill grant, did I miss something?
And you're gonna put out a email to?
Quickly ask questions on village center.
Yes, and to be wary of third-party communication, and make sure you know that where you're getting information from is official village information and not, not, there's something else I thought of.
Did you get the council vacancy?
Oh, yeah, you need that on there, Barbie, the testing the.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm going to extend the council vacancy.
And include the, the date for the, you'll have to do a special meeting.
And the special, and a special meeting day.
Yeah, and I would go ahead and reach out to the three people that have applied to, go ahead and schedule those.
Okay.
Interviews.
Okay, all right, um, and I think that, what, what was the third, what was the, um, the thirteenth one after the, out, F A Qs on the, um, village center district?
Land use, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, well, that is one actually, I didn't hear, uh, I have to send the council the land use plan after the planning board finishes.
It was, uh, F A Qs and, uh, third-party communication.
Oh, third-party communication.
Or.
Sources of information.
Anonymous sources, yeah.
Communication sources.
Um, and then Rohit needs to send the land use plan out.
And that's to council.
Yes. And Rohit, will you stick in the email that we need to have it done by?
Oh, the June works?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, and that's it, that's all my.
Is this yours?
No.
All right, um, next up, we have council comments, Bob, you want to go first?
Uh, again, I appreciate, uh, this month, uh, the flexibility of being able to, uh, participate in the manner that we've been doing. Uh, this was, uh, I believe, an important meeting, uh, for all of us, and, uh, there were a lot of topics to be discussed, uh, but I'm delighted of, uh, you know, and appreciative of all the comments, uh, we've all made, and, uh, I'm really excited about the fact that the public, uh, you know, will have an opportunity to hear really what we discuss, what we do, um, even though it's posted, you know, on audio on our website, you know, some people are visual, so, um, you know, with that, I, I just appreciate the work that everybody's doing in the community.
Thank you, Bob. Jamie, Kim, either?
I'm good. Um, just quick, quick, uh, thank you to all the first responders out there, um, both local and state and national, to, uh, help us pull this through this, the current, the current administration, this is, these are trying times, and I think we're, I think we've kind of really truly knocked it out of park, um, for something that we've never had to deal with before, and so, many thanks, many, many thanks to the first responders and, and all the people involved to keep us safe and, and, uh, work us through this. Um, the biggest, I think the biggest thing in my mind today is thank you, staff, for everything that you do and help us with this, um, and, um, I, I think it's what's been highlighted over the past week, um, again, you, you, you get duck lemons and you make lemonade. I think, uh, that it, it shined a light on the fact that we, we did not take the adequate steps to communicate everything that we do, uh, even though we've talked about it, I mean, this, these are things that we've discussed, um, but no better time now than to get it out, better late than ever, and we're gonna, that's a priority for us to make sure that we get what we're doing and who we are and what we're doing and the things we want to accomplish out there, and make, making sure that there's not misinformation, there's not false information, um, propaganda, I just do look at some of these comments and things that people put out, to me is, again, is appalling, um, but I can't say too much because we weren't on top of it to get it taken care of. Moving forward, we will, and, uh, again, shine, shine a light on it, and, um, I, I appreciate everyone's hard work to, to make that happen, so, um, there we go, it's spring.
Thank you, um, just real quick, for those of, uh, people listening in that weren't privy to a Union County call I was on about a week or so ago, on a conference call, um, uh, you know, when you look at the overall cases in Union County, it's really low, that's the good news, and, um, and I'm talking in just over a hundred cases, I believe, is what they said, something like that, and of that, seventy-five of them are in, like, high risk, if I remember, and I don't, I don't want to quote the number. if I remember. And I don't, I don't wanna quote the numbers, but a lot of it were in the very high-risk areas, like facilities and stuff like that. So, um, you know, uh, farmers market in the Union County continue to reopen, animal shelters are reopened as of May fifth, fourth, uh, parks are opening back, back up with social distancing and limited parking spaces, uh, camping sites that are allowing up to fifty percent of the camping sites, and libraries have curbside checkout. That's just, I had some information. Even that, with all that, we are, we are gonna see some budget falls at the state level and local level. As far as locally here, um, I wanted to shout out to all those graduating and I'm glad we were able to do this resolution. Um, I know, uh, places like Marvin Creek Tonight at five-thirty had a little parade for their, I think it was eighteen seniors and stuff. Congrats to them, I hope that went well. Um, and, uh, you know, I think all the little towns in somewhere are giving their own little, uh, recognitions and, uh, you know, just shout out to all those graduating. We're very proud of you all and unfortunately, sorry you get to miss something special in your life. Um, thanks staff, obviously. Guys, just continue to, uh, you know, do the right things and, and help us out with these things, especially during these times. Um, I appreciate all the residents who've done what they've done to get where we are and, and do the social distancing. It's been hard on everyone, especially with the young kids and if you're able to travel, that's great and, and, and change the scenery, but it, I think that's all helped to get us where we are. And to those of you who have donated either your time or your own money to these causes, thank you for that. And I'm sure that's, that goes on and on. But anyways, other than that, um, I think it was a really good meeting and I think there was a lot that needed to be said and felt like, um, a lot got out, a lot of good information. Um, I encourage all of you that are listening in, we're gonna have, uh, those available time slots, come see us, come talk to us, any questions. We will be open for business to get the facts and that's what's important. So with that, I'm gonna ask some motion to, we going to close session?
No, I said I want to say anything else, good.
She did.
I said it was good. Thank you. Um, I, I mean, I'm good with closed session.
No, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, no closed session?
No.
Okay. All right, so I'll need a motion to, uh.
The juror?
The juror.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right.
All right, Barbie?
Barbie, I gotta sign some things?